Microphone number three, school committee meeting, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Testing one, two, three, four, microphone number three. Testing one, two, three, four, Monday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is it? A little bit. Testing microphone number four. School committee meeting, Monday, March eighteenth.
Okay, you're good.
Testing microphone number five. Monday, March eighteenth, school committee meeting. Number six. Testing one, two, three, four. We good?
Oh, you're good.
Okay. Wireless gonna work with you? Do you have the computer?
Oh, I have the computer, yes.
We gotta go. We can do it either two ways. Wireless or wireless. All right, testing microphone number seven. One, two, three, four.
He's not good.
Sounds good, all right. Now podium. Standing at the podium, testing podium mic. School committee meeting, Monday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. I think I can hear it in the building. Don't know if you can hear it on our side. Testing one, two, three, four.
You're good.
Well, you're all the way over there.
Yeah, usually we're not here. Usually we're right next to that, so I plug right in. That's why I came extra early. Just to make sure this has gotta get going before we start.
Oh, well, that was at the high school.
No, it was here too. Usually this is set up here. And these tables are like this.
Now, this has always been set up.
No, I've been assistant superintendent for three years, so I've come to every meeting. Let's see.
Assistant superintendent, new report?
Assistant superintendent, new report, yeah. I got an unknown device. Let's see.
This has to go near HDMI.
Okay, so I need a dongle. I don't have any.
Do you have the dongle?
I hope so.
I hope so too, because that's, that's the thing that always disappears.
That's why everybody hit Lido right on. Let's see.
Let's see. I used to have three of those.
Yeah.
And then they disappear. People walk away with them.
Right, so let's see. So I go like that, and then what's this gonna go into?
This one goes, this goes over here, I think. This goes on that side of one. Most of them.
I know, I don't have that.
It might not, you might not need it. Some, some of them.
Oh, okay. Maybe it's.
Some of them do, some of them don't.
Right, something. Let's see.
If not, I haven't called long enough where I can get you.
Oh, awesome. What was your first name again? I'm sorry?
I'm Cliff.
Cliff, Lisa Murray.
Lisa, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Okay. Wants me to do a pin.
Yeah, see, if you, it should, it should go directly onto you. See, I think it's because we're, we're not plugged into the opposite side. And I don't have that. I'm gonna try your high light.
Okay. Gosh, I promise you I can do power too, just to be on the safe side. Ain't been charged in all day. Just wanna try something. Usually on my devices, I can do it here.
Do you wanna be sitting over here? Do you need to be sitting over here?
No, I usually am in the audience.
That's probably why I don't, I didn't recognize you.
Yeah, I'm usually over there in the audience.
Do you need any cordage from us, or are you good? Are you gonna be able to?
I know, I got long enough. Okay. For them, I have plenty long enough.
Perfect.
So you're still gonna need your dongle.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So whatever side your HDMI goes into, I don't know when you have a computer.
Okay. Let's try that. Is it your power?
I'll get your power.
Oh, okay.
I have power at the table, because normally it's here.
Yeah. I have, I mean, I'm fully charged, but I have two huge presentations to do.
Is that theoretically or literally?
Both.
Something should be going on with your computer.
Why is it not? I've been reading it. HDMI one. What he said. Let's see. Let's see. Let's see.
Just now, it's gonna be a computer.
Need to just make sure that I'm on the right display.
Is it detecting you?
What's that, Lisa? Oh, please, I need a jumper. Is this light? And down on wide, does that make a difference?
Let's try this one.
Yeah.
Does that make a difference? Oop, you got something.
It likes your dongle better than my dongle. Who knew? Oh, gosh.
It's always something.
Cliff, high five.
I know, huh? I'm not good at this. I'm not very savvy with this stuff.
I used to like teach this, so.
They never had this stuff when I was going through school.
Yeah.
Okay, so here's the clicker for this. You probably won't need it.
Is that in focus? I don't have my glasses on. Is that in focus?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, let's see. Go. Cliff, you say, oh, you're perfect. You're perfect. Awesome, thank you. Making all my fears disappear. I mean, I'm fully charged, but I have this thing in my head. I'm gonna run out of battery.
I hear you. My car's forty-seven miles left to get, to gas, but I gotta go over and get gas.
Yes.
I don't trust it.
Exactly.
Do you not need those chairs anymore?
No. Well, you know what it is? I just don't like them on top of me while I'm taking notes. I just feel like, so I, I don't mind one row, but when they get this close, I just feel like they're on top of me.
Do you want that for every setup?
Yeah, if you don't, if you, are you the one who does the chair?
Well, it's either me or Matt.
Yeah, I just don't like them on top of me or on top of.
We thought that they were like, we thought that that was like people that were, were important.
Oh. Yeah, but usually.
That's how I'd even want me to put it.
Yeah. They don't usually have to sit. Plus, I don't like people to be too close to your wires or.
Well, I can tell.
And now we have the tables, so that works out good, because we used to do sign-ups on this counter, so now they don't have to. They can just go over there.
I mean, if you guys prefer, I can.
A what? Clicker by chance?
Sean has clickers at the office. I don't, I don't bring one with me.
We don't have one.
If he did it late yet.
And is it possible, I mean, it was a little table, so I can't.
I think I can do that for him.
Awesome. I can fit my, my presentation.
Is that big enough for you or you?
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Actually, that's perfect. My water, I do.
Thank you.
Perfect, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
He's not keeping up.
It's all right. Now they have the table, I can use my finger.
What else do I use?
Wow. Expect a lot of people?
Yes. I didn't happen to bring a clicker with you, did you?
Ah.
I don't have my usual computer bag, and I don't have my glasses, so I can't even see that.
Oh, really?
No, it's all right, I can just go like this, try here.
Yeah, you sure?
Yeah, yeah, not a big deal.
It was in my book bag. I was gonna bring my book bag with me, I was like, ah.
I think I have one in my car, but it's all right.
These are agendas on the table. What is your name? I always.
Tom.
Tom, this.
That's, that's thanks, because I have one sitting in my back. But you can just use the, just do it like that, right?
Yeah.
All right, what do I have? Principal.
I don't need to give you these things. Do you like it in per, do you like these also, a loose one?
Sure.
But you're detailed ones, and you've looked just saying.
All right, so I'm doing the principals, school choice, budget update, transportation bid. And then. Yeah, so I'll take these, that front row off our plan, so.
Okay.
When the guys come in, they'll know.
Yeah.
You know, that that row doesn't line there anymore. Because we're just going off of this.
Oh, I see, yeah. I see. This is.
I'll make sure it's taken care of, though.
Thank you. This one's really good.
Go ahead. We might plan on meeting on the count.
What are you doing first? Nick's group or Jamie's group? I think your paper might have mixed.
Ah, Nick.
Okay, I'll leave it like that.
Sure got.
Your pen needs to sign on.
Which of them tell, imping, impa? Imping student voice. Avocacy. Nashville, Tennessee. What's going, Mr. Mark? I didn't get to see you today.
I know, what's going on? Good day. I got a couple naps in. This is on the student voice.
Email me your.
Okay, do you want me to just read you this paper copy, or would you like to have it as a?
Um, if you have it electronically, send it to me. You don't have to do it today.
Okay.
Because when we do the minutes, now we attach that at the back, so the electronic is stored. So, but either way, I can take that one.
I will email Ms. Cooper.
All right. Okay.
Hey.
How's your weekend? So, I'm pretty sick, aren't you? No, I, you know, I think I had a work.
Hello.
Thank you.
Lisa, you were so great. I went to the show.
Thank you.
Friday night, I went to opening night.
Oh, good. I think that was better than our.
Such good energy. Big audience.
I know, I know.
Did it feel good?
Yeah.
People cheering and clapping.
I think that's the biggest audience I've seen for a show yet.
YouTube. And I've been a reader, so, yeah.
Thank you.
So good.
Cool. I'm all excited about that.
Yeah.
All fun and.
Yeah.
We just have a.
But a little.
We have Lido.
But you do that.
You almost done it, actually. You come in.
Right?
Yeah.
Like, maybe you'll have something on Wednesday.
We have no rehearsals until the show, so.
So back in.
Just go back, yeah. Yeah.
Love it.
So we're still hoping I don't forget anything.
Yeah, no, you're good.
It'll be good.
You're solid.
Yeah. Thank you.
How's it going?
I'm gonna come down.
What's that?
Scared of your show over here?
No. Lisa Murray got hot, she opened. She's having a.
It feels warm to me, but I haven't.
I just couldn't get a breeze up, so it's quite.
That would do it. Do it.
Because it was hot and stuffy. We're just thinking about you, Brian.
Oh, my gosh.
Have a hot slash.
I would. Andrew, hello?
All right, I just emailed Ms. Cooper and then I received.
Yes.
Forgot that.
All right, well, if you think of it, it's got a little time.
How's he doing?
Good thing, how are you?
Good.
I think it's gonna be a long.
Good colors, you're bringing some spring. Yeah, I know. Energy in here. We need that, I'm ready for some more.
I mean, I just told you.
I don't have time to bring all this.
Sure. I mean, I, I looked at her, the little slide thing she put together, but then the actual document, it's like twenty-six pages of. And a lot of it is just form text, you know, with our information inserted in.
Oh, right.
I, I don't think we have a lot.
Oh, one, the actual document?
The actual document, document is in there, and it's like really long, you know? And there's only, I mean, I don't think we have a lot of leeway with that stuff.
No, I skipped her a lot. I skipped her a hard time, so you're gonna be the closest I was to her, so it's like, right?
Please, yes.
Don't read the whole thing. All right.
Yeah, I mean, it's on there because we're required to approve it, but it feels like you're.
It's a lot, it's a lot of those, like, we do, right? Like, oh, you have to.
Yeah. I just didn't know about it, because it's only every three years. It might be familiar to you, but.
No.
Hey, spend a while.
Probably. Once in March.
We were talking about the SOA. This is my first time.
So if it came up.
Because it's every three years.
If it came up for me once, I was only like two months in.
Right.
And I have no idea what happens, so.
Right.
I would have.
It's all a bore, is what he's saying. All right. I like the table inside the door, I think that works. You know, for people to sign in and grab an agenda.
Yes.
Instead of out in the hallway.
It's probably a super hot neighborhood. Julia, you ordered that stuff yet?
Oh, uh, tactical.
Classic roundabout. Let's go.
Tactical apps.
Nope, you brought your notebook. I left mine in the car, because budget.
I made me a stick.
What's that?
I brought my other meeting.
You know? It's AP budgeting, right?
It wasn't on.
Your advanced placement.
Agenda item, so I felt like I didn't.
Callahan needs support.
I don't even know if I have money.
You speak out of turn.
I didn't get it.
Do you want mine?
I'm sure they have, I'm sure they have one for you.
Yeah, we just, we pass them out when you're here.
No, it's really helpful, actually. You're a paper person.
That is true. Then they update.
You didn't get the binder, all right.
I'm sure they can get you one. Yeah.
We have one for you. Michelle, we have a binder for Dr. Higgins, right?
I'm sure you do, you just have to, yeah.
PMPL.
Yeah.
It's all right. There's no, there's no quiz today. There's no quiz.
All right, so I amended one here.
The assessment will be, April first will be the. Project is, um, April twenty-third.
April twenty-third.
That's when we're voting, so.
That's a pass fail.
Yeah, that's the pass.
But that's on me.
Yeah, where was that?
Oh, um, some convenient.
Oh, right, right, right.
First term, something spooky.
That's a, that's a teacher.
Can I, can I have some length of the agenda, Sarah? Yeah. Can I have the length of the agenda? Can you split the research?
You mean, because it's just staff? Because I haven't looked it.
Yes, it's all staff. It's essentials.
Oh, yeah.
Is that okay with you?
Sure.
Sorry.
You don't wanna pat them on the back?
We can, we can tell them things.
Give them a thumbs up.
If other people wanna do it, that's fine, though.
I don't go strongly about it, I know they can.
I won't be able to get.
Make sure there's a good photo op.
There's a wide.
I mean, we often will just take them all this anyway.
I can get anything except for.
Formal reset.
Public schools email.
I think that's fine.
Makes sense. They don't know that this building is weird.
Firewall kind of thing, or something?
Against ourselves?
No, but like why the school emails?
That's what I mean, like we're, like we're blocked from the school server. Reading.
I don't know.
Of course, I know, I should talk to Lisa.
Yeah. It operates just like that. Oh, really?
Yeah, but that's okay. It's okay. I can, okay.
Really good.
My brother is.
And I'm here, but not, it's just that some of these.
People like us that are hearts.
Some considerable time.
I'm heart sick.
I know, it's my thing.
Yeah, he's, it's a little thing.
What? Oh, it's, it's right there. It's right behind this one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, it's actually coffee.
It's tea. I can't drink it. Are there any of those guys who do like a latte after dinner?
No, well, I don't drink it in that type of setting. Coffee and such.
I forgot.
But I could.
Sure. He's fine.
What do you mean? My kids are old.
Don't we need sleep?
I know. I don't really remember that.
That's good.
Weird.
You don't remember? You didn't walk out?
I don't know.
I think that's how the human brain works. You would never have more kids.
That's true. If you fully remember. I know that their numbers aren't listed in the packet, but are they the same?
Obviously, my wife.
Uh, yeah.
But I was.
You have it.
Yeah.
Nurses and all that stuff, but.
What is in there?
Oh, there's herbal tea. Yeah.
That's a vodka. Water in here.
Yeah, it's pretty, that was pretty subtle.
If I could stay with him in his bed and sleep, that's why I got to his bed. I was, I was.
We don't typically, we post it.
I don't like, and my husband.
We post the openings, but we don't put slots.
Sleep starfish.
Advertise, and then people can inquire.
Yeah, people, if we. Who'd have heard I'm getting, yeah, old wives want to sleep. The ones that happen, it's pretty much.
Hello.
Oh, yeah, you did it, though.
I was gonna throw on my Irish knit sweater, but.
Was it the park lunch yesterday?
What was that?
So, spent some time for the park lunch yesterday. I went to the show with the firehouse last night. It was good.
Were there two beer launch?
No, no beer. Just roast milk.
Just roast milk. It's a robbery.
I love that place.
Where'd you go?
To Combeau. Oh, to go, man, six dollars to go.
Four.
Thank you, ma'am. I got like four days of samples, and it's awesome. Barely been able to sleep.
All right, we are on the air. Are we ready? All right, I'd like to call this March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, school committee business.
All right, I'd like to call this March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, School Committee Business Meeting to Order. Mrs. Yell, can you take the roll, please?
Mayor Riordan.
I'm here.
Sarah Hall.
Here.
Andrew Bolker.
Here.
Brian Callahan.
Here.
Breonna Higgins.
Here.
Kathleen Shaw.
Here.
Mia Walker.
Present.
All right, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the word of God, for which it stands, one nation, and God, and universal, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, and I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Hall.
Okay, good evening, everyone, we have four people signed up for public comment. Before we begin, I just have to go over a few reminders. Please keep to topics within the school committee's scope of authority. We encourage civility. Be mindful of the fact that this is a public meeting, which is being livestreamed and recorded for all ages in our community. Please be aware that this is not an opportunity for discussion, and you will not receive a response at this time. You will have two minutes for your comment. Longer comments can be sent to the school committee via email. And the first name on the list is John Genjemi.
Is my phone right here?
Right here is perfect. Pull it down a little bit, I think you're good.
Hello, I'm John Genjemi. I'm president of Newburyport Teachers Association, and I am here to express my full support of the superintendent's proposed restructuring of central office. Superintendent Gallagher presented the overall restructuring plan to the NTA Executive Committee last week. Our membership appreciates the opportunity to hear directly from the superintendent and believes the plan effectively reflects feedback from educators. The superintendent's recommendations increase support and supervision for our special education teachers, counselors, and English language teachers. These individuals play a crucial role in ensuring that all students receive the support they require to thrive academically and emotionally. Addressing staffing needs and providing support within these departments is essential for maintaining a high standard of education. I trust that the superintendent's plan will help address any staffing challenges and provide the necessary support to our, to our educators. Reallocating resources to increase support for the special education, English learner, and social emotional needs of our students and families in our community is a step in the right direction. This demonstrates our commitment to equity and inclusion, ensuring that every student has access to the resources and support they need to succeed. The superintendent's plan also continues to invest in leadership opportunities for Newburyport's teachers. With strong teachers in leadership roles, MPS creates a culture of respect, and the whole district benefits from the experience of our educators. As the superintendent officer often says, we are in this together, and this plan provides a structure that will ensure continued collaboration and shared decision making. In conclusion, I urge the school committee to support the superintendent's decision to restructure the central office team. This plan not only promotes teacher leadership, but also prioritizes support for our students and addressing student staffing needs within critical departments. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Jen Hatch.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Hatch, I live in Newburyport, and I actually really loved just hearing that because I came here to talk about the twenty-five, FY twenty-five proposed student services structure. I have a first year student at Brez, he's in pre-K and has an IEP, and basically, I just wanted to make sure that the teachers had been heard and were part of this and feel supported. We love the Brezhner hand, we love our teachers and staff, we feel really supported by his OT and his speech service providers. And we feel fortunate to be a family that is incredibly supported and are having a positive experience. With that said, over the last year, we've only been at the Brez since September, but have had an IEP since last fall, there's been a lot of turmoil, not a lot of turnover, which seems from an outsider's perspective, some sort of turmoil. So, we just wanted to make sure that the teachers and his OT and speech support staff are being supported. And just that you were considering the sustainability of the new plan, that you had teacher buy-in, and that there was knowledge and expertise for the folks that would actually be doing the IEP team facilitation and management. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Um, next is Chris Cunningham.
Good evening, I'm Chris Cunningham, I live at one twenty-nine Low Street, resident and Whittier teacher. I'm speaking on behalf of former mayor Donna Holliday. I chose to make a public comment this evening because I have a strong positive opinion of former mayor and current Whittier School Committee member Donna. In fact, I look back on her years as a mayor as a time of great civic pride, a feeling that continues today. And we accomplished a lot in those years, including a school building project, the Brezhner hand, a school renovation, the, the Knock Mullen School, a major overhaul of our sewer treatment plant. And of course, the senior center that we're in today. I've never served as a municipal elected official, but I know projects like that require a lot of critical skills in building consensus and bringing reluctant people on board. In other words, it requires leadership. Donna Holliday is a leader I trust, both as a resident, I trust her, and as a teacher, I trust her. It's also clear to me that Donna Holliday puts students first. She sees Whittier for what it is, more than a building, more than a dollar figure. She sees it as the tight-knit community of staff and students that we are. There's a lot of uncertainty regarding the next steps for our local vocational technical high school. I had a recent conversation with Donna Holliday, and I can tell you that she is considering all possible contingencies and exploring every possible option. And more importantly, she is concerned in finding ways to complete repairs or renovations without disruption to our students. It was the first concern she mentioned to me when I spoke to her, and it was refreshing to hear that she's anticipating solutions and thinking about the student experience first. I'm not on a first-name basis with Donna Holliday, I'm not a close friend, but I have seen her around town for decades, since before I was a teacher and before she was mayor. When I was a young, very young cashier working at Fowles Newsstand, if you remember Fowles Newsstand. She was my favorite customer, always a pleasure to chat with, always polite, always had time to talk to me.
That's your two minutes, a little wrap up.
Okay, Donna Holliday is somebody I have a lot of respect for, so it's really an honor for me to speak on her behalf for reappointment to the Whittier School Committee, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Robert Foster.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for letting me come in, my name is Bob Foster, I live in fifty-five Jefferson Street, right down the street. And I am here to specifically talk about the restructuring of the school, um, um, front office, as well as specifically the special ed department. I have a daughter who has special needs, the district is taking a great, great care of her, she is outplaced, but when she was here, they did a wonderful job. But what I'm really worried about is the practical implementation of the, what you're talking about in the restructuring, specifically with regards to the teachers, and the amount of work that they would have to do. You know, would these, would these teachers run the IEP meetings? They are the leaders, along with the parents of these students, so would they be running the IEP meetings? Do they have the expert knowledge to be these leaders, to interface with the outside of the community, to interface, to know what things they can bring in to help the student? It's a, it's a lot for a teacher. Would the new director be involved with this? You know, you went through this painstaking progress of having the new director, special ed director come in here, was he involved in this idea of this new structure as you're changing this structure? You know, it's, it's really difficult for teachers to teach and interface with the parents to be the face of the district when there's conflict. So what type of, what type of pressure are you putting on these teachers as they're acting in two kind of roles that sometimes are opposed to each other? So I think the restructuring is fine, with the exception of the special ed, and I, I think you should slow down maybe and rethink it, thank you.
Thank you. Did we have anyone else here tonight who wished to speak in public comment? All right, thank you. Um, so we'll move on to our staff recognitions.
All right. All right, thank you very much, as part of our traditions, we have often been recognized staff and students for extraordinary accomplishments. And tonight, we figured a lot of our principals and administration nominate their faculty and support staff for great, great things. But tonight, I wanted to recognize some of our principals and some of the things that they'll be doing representing Newburyport Public Schools. The first group is our middle school group, so that would be Mr. Nick Marcos, Brenda Palmasano, and Eric Shulga. They're going to be presenting at the National Association of Secondary School Principals in Tennessee this July. And their workshop is Ampli Student Voice, a workshop empowering students through effective communication and advocacy. So they'll be presenting largely in part of the student-led conferences that we've begun in Newburyport. So we just wanted to recognize them, that they'll be at the national stage and presenting some great practice on our behalf, so come on up.
Okay. Thank you, Mary, you too.
Yeah, we'll miss that photographer tonight. And then that's Eric's. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Of course I can.
I love that. A little collaboration. And then also being recognized tonight, we'll also be presenting at the national level at the ASCD, Association of Supervised Incurriculum Development, down in Washington DC in this March. Did I approve that? Yeah, okay. This Friday, I'm just kidding. So as we've been talking about, I think through our strategic plan, and you've heard, I think, a lot of the different budget presentations at the school committee over the years. The trauma-sensitive classroom, and Ms. Tara Rossi and Jamie Sokolowski, they'll be doing a workshop entitled Healing Classrooms, Nurturing Connections, Empowering Teachers for Trauma-Sensitive Success. The conference will be held this Friday in Washington DC, and we're just extremely proud that they're going to be sharing our best practice at the national level. So come on up, Jamie and Tara. Little photo op, right here, yeah? This, you can use this as part of your evidence at the end of the year. All right, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I don't know if this is going to take you, but I surprise Mr. Callahan, but we were thinking we'd move right along to the consent agenda.
Sure.
Are you ready?
I am ready.
All right.
I move that the following may be in bills, if you report public schools, not in the aggregate.
Eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and four cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment, there are no conflicts. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we do have two sets of minutes, they were in the amended packet that landed in your inbox today. I did get a chance to let them over, Ms. Yell, so I don't have any notes, but if anyone else does, let's start with the, the special meeting for March fourth, were there any notes or changes? Okay, get a motion to approve the special meeting minutes?
So moved.
I just need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein, Ms. Yell.
And now, also March fourth, the regular business meeting minutes, are there any corrections there? All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set, Ms. Yell?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, it's time for our student representative report.
All righty, so I guess we shall start with the Brezhner hand news. The Clipper Read-a-Thon at the Brezhner hand has begun. The goal of the Clipper Read-a-Thon is to support our district's literacy initiative and to raise funds for field trip buses, cultural enrichment activities, and library books. The Read-a-Thon is a school-wide activity, and all students are expected to be registered and participate in reading. Collecting pledges and fundraising is an optional component that parents and families can participate in if they wish. The focus at school will solely be reading, but we are so grateful for the PTO and parent community for supporting this initiative. The youth art exhibit featuring Brezhner hand students, Brezhner hand students are proudly participating in the youth art exhibit. Thank you to the NEF for their continued support of the Newburyport Schools Youth Art Exhibit. The artwork will be on display at the senior center for the month of March. The closing reception is on April fourth from four to six thirty PM. Clipper courses, our third session will begin the week of April first and end the week of May twenty-seventh. Registration was sent out today to parents. Thank you to our teachers for creating and sustaining this vibrant after-school opportunity. Now onto the Mullen news, PTO-sponsored Clipper Read-a-Thon has begun, and with that, we have fun events like Mullen Medieval Library, character parades, and Newburyport reads. Mullen School will be rocking our mismatched socks to celebrate World Down Syndrome Day this Thursday. In Knock, in Knock news, Knock College trips. We are thrilled to announce our ongoing commitment to our strategic plan and our dedication to the portrait of a graduate. We are excited to facilitate college visits for our students, forging connections with the esteemed institutions. Our sixth grade students will explore the University of New England, while seventh grade students will embark on an enlightening journey to Curry College. And finally, our eighth grade students will have the privilege of visiting Merrimack College, enriching their educational experience and broadening their horizons. We look forward to fostering these partnerships and exposing our students to possibilities after high school. The March Madness update, as March Madness unfolds, the excitement mounts. As a reminder, the Clipper Cup finale is just around the corner, only two weeks away. Our staff and students' active participation and enthusiasm play a vital role in driving our school spirit. With the competition nearing its climax, we eagerly, eagerly anticipate discovering which advisories will clinch a coveted spot in the top four. It's clear the students are, are relishing the challenge to make the final four and compete for the Clipper Cup. In Newburyport High School news, this weekend, NHS student musicians Cedar Schumacher and Evan Lake U will rehearse and perform with the Massachusetts All-State Honors Jazz Band and Chorus. They will rehearse on Friday at the State Music Teachers Conference in Worcester and perform on Saturday at Boston Symphony Hall. Everyone is so very proud of these students, from their parents to the NHS Advent team, to Mr. Cohen and the entire NPS music teaching staff who have ever worked with them in their journey. Congratulations on this rare achievement. Thanks to the generosity of the NEF, our students and staff will have access to solar glasses to view this rare astronomical event. In our area, the eclipse is scheduled for April eighth, starting at approximately two fifteen PM and peaking at three thirty PM. Also, NYX is holding an event for the eclipse as well. Congratulations to Priya Core and Rochelle Seznick, who both received this year's High School Student Peace Prize Award. Both students have made tremendous contributions to help the high school increase a sense of belonging and inclusivity across the building. The Global Citizenship Certification Program is completing its first year, and the following seniors are the trailblazers for this program and will be recognized at graduation for successful completion of all programs requirements. Shannon Brock, Sophia Franco, Zoe Kukuba, Bridget Mellett, Brila Pavo, and Alex Sullivan. The Spitten C-W-A-N-S, pronounced swans, the NHS Slam Team made it to the finals at the Free Verse Youth Poetry Slam in Lowell this weekend, but met defeat in the final round. Don't, don't forget to check out Legally Blonde if you haven't already done so, shows are this Thursday and Friday at seven PM and Saturday at two PM, thank you.
Thank you, Lizzie. As you started, I realized that you don't have a mic, but it didn't matter, you've got your theater voice on. If you didn't get to see Lizzie in. If you didn't get to see Lizzie in Legally Blonde, highly recommended.
You were awesome.
Highly recommended.
Really? Just told the show. I thought you were awesome.
Okay, next up, we have our Whittier School Committee reps here for an update. Can come on up to the mic.
Mayor Reardon, Superintendent, members of the school committee, I'm going to give overview of what we did, has been going on at Whittier in terms of the programming and academics, and Brett will give an update on what's going on with the building project, or building information. It's very exciting that two out of five Presidential Scholars for the State Massachusetts Career Technical Education Programs were recognized in Marlboro last Thursday by Deputy Commissioner Dr. Regina Robinson and Nathaniel Schmarco, I apologize if I destroyed your name, from Groveland, and Gabriela Ortiz from Haverhill, were recognized for their outstanding academic and vocational achievements, as well as their extracurricular activities and volunteer work. Whittier is doing an inaugural event, March 21st, this Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00, in the school gymnasium. It's free of charge, and the event is open to all high school seniors within the 11 communities that represent Whittier Tech. The fair provides an opportunity for students to connect with industry and professionals and learn about potential career paths. Our senior vocational exploratory program began today. We have one student participating from Newburyport. Students will be exploring careers in culinary arts, advanced manufacturing, auto body, marine technology, masonry, carpentry, metal fabrication, and plumbing. It's an eight-week program, and it's free to all community high school students, and is our hope that students will complete this program and enroll in our 200-hour Career Technical Institute that are supported by the state for free. That happens in the summer after this exploratory program. We received word from Pat Levitt, retired teacher for many, many years at Newburyport. She donated $23,000 in honor of her late son, Joseph P. Levitt, for Whittier. We are grateful to the donation and her support and her family's support of Whittier. You should all be receiving the Whittier Wire. If you do not, please let me know, because it should be going out to the school committee, city council, and the mayor's office. It's an online newsletter that keeps you up to date on what's going on at Whittier. And also, we did approve the Whittier budget at our school committee meeting that will be moving forward on April 11th for a public hearing on the budget.
Good evening, Mayor Reardon, school committee members. I'm going to give you an update on what's going on with the building, not the building project, but the building itself. Since the end of January, we've had a roof leak in our gym. It happened over a weekend, and it did buckle a floor. We've got a private contractor coming to repair that. We've got some heating issues on the first floor, the second floor, third floor, and fourth floor. Our facilities people have been taking care of it along the way. There's one area that has to be done over April vacation because of a shutdown. We also had a water heater let go that served our cosmetology. The maintenance crew, they did get a temporary one in there until we can get the parts for the main water heater for that area. We had a compressor, a corkscrew compressor breakdown, and we still have groundwater coming into the Substation A. Fortunately, the pumps will keep up with that. The grounds, we had a tree fall on the baseball backstop. Took that right out, and the maintenance crew is cleaning that up, along with getting the shack, the concession shack, ready for the spring sports. The building overview. We've lost power in our communications. We've lost power communication to the north side of the building. That's been fixed. We've had the circulator pump fail. The front gate has failed. We had, in the treatment plant, a heater went down, the pumps went down. We've got ongoing pump repairs. And this Wednesday, Superintendent Lynch has a meeting with the town of Merrimack to look at connecting with them when they get their sewer system upgraded. And that's about it. Lots of problems. Thank you.
Did anyone have any questions?
Brett, when they replaced the roof a couple years ago, was that this part roof not replaced?
I think that was close to 15 years ago now.
I think it was, I think there was a pretty substantial capital request, like four years ago.
If I believe it was a $3 million job.
Okay. Did they do the whole roof?
Most of it.
Most of it?
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Ms. Walker?
Do you have a sense of how long the town of Merrimack connection, how far ahead away that is?
I have no idea. I don't know where they stand with plans or construction right now. That's what, I believe that's what this meeting's all about Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said it already happened.
No, this, I'm sorry, Thursday.
Okay. And then I guess the other question is just related to the budget. You mentioned it got passed by the school committee in April, for a public hearing in April, and then it'll come to us, to the full city, correct? Are there any building, you know, upkeep items in that initial budget? None?
I mean, there certainly are maintenance and...
Ongoing maintenance, but no additional funding.
No major capital, because that seems to be prohibitive at this point, based on the fact that, you know, we don't know what's going to happen until a new plan is in place for the budget. I mean, for the building. So there really is mostly line items that go into maintenance and repair of the building.
Yeah. Have you, I mean, is it your perception that the maintenance funds are higher this year than they were last year, or is it approximately the same amount?
No, it is a lot.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Can you just go into like, what's the budget process look like? If you guys already passed it, I guess just...
Well, we have a subcommittee meeting where the budget was given out to all the members. We reviewed it, asked questions, and then it went to the full school committee last week, where it was reviewed by the committee at that point. Then it goes to, it was approved unanimously, then it will go to a public hearing at that point, and will come back to the school committee if there's anything that needs to be adjusted or changed based on the public hearing. And then it's up to the individual communities, as Whittier does, it's going to the 11 communities, as it always does, to present the budget and the assessment for each of the 11 communities.
So just one meeting, subcommittee meeting, and then one meeting of the full...
Several workshop meetings.
Several workshop meetings.
All right. We all set?
It's a 2.69% increase, and it's really unfortunate that, given all the efforts that went into pass the Student Opportunities Act, 0.34% Chapter 17 increase.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to get into the mid-year assessment data. Did you want to introduce that at all, or should we just...
Yeah.
Ms. Apolito, come on up.
Ms. Apolito can come right up. Ms. Apolito put together, I think, a great presentation for our mid-year data review. And I don't know, is there anything else I need to add, other than all the hard work that you've done?
Well, I appreciate the kudos for the hard work.
Yes.
I also want to express our thanks to our teachers and our interventionists for all their hard work and working directly with our students and helping them grow as learners. So, how's that? Great. Okay, so the beginning part, oh, good evening, everybody. Sorry. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me this evening. The beginning part of the presentation is a review for some members of the school committee and others who are new. I thought I would just go back over a couple things. Okay, so we start with our mission, and this is directly in our district improvement plan and on our website. Looking at the whole child and our practices and what we do daily for kids, practicing kindness and perseverance, and that's through their learning and their being as human beings. Celebrate each unique individual. Value creative, experiential, rigorous educational opportunities, scholarly pursuits, and lifelong learning. And I'm not going to read every slide. You can read the rest, plus I don't have my glasses, so I'm just giving you a little cue. I can't really read what that says, so I'm just kind of... Okay, and why do we assess our students? Obviously, to inform our instruction, so we know what changes we need to make or what supports we need to put in place to have all of our students growing as learners. We gather information about our students prior to instruction using a pre-assessment or our diagnostic that you'll hear about tonight. We continually gather data about how well students are understanding the instruction, and that's done typically daily through all instruction by teachers, whether it's something called like an exit ticket, where a teacher might have a quick prompt and ask the children to respond to the prompt, and they can check understanding that way. Or it could be, for example, like a tech program called, for example, Kahoot, where it's kind of like a multiple choice, and they use their devices to vote. That's another way. But it's just great ways for teachers to see the effectiveness of their instruction as well. And then to adjust instruction and reteach when necessary to ensure students are successful. And that would be like an end-of-a-unit assessment, or the end-of-year diagnostic, or something we'll talk about today, which is not really summative, but our mid-year assessment data. And then who uses all this data? It's great to have all these numbers, but then what do we do with it? So last year, I established a district data team, and that consists of the CEELs and ILTs from all four schools and their administration, as well as the vertical team members who come together. We look at the data, we talk about the implications of that data vertically, where we see growth, where we need, have some challenges and changes we might need to make. The schools have become very proficient in school-based data teams with their CEELs. They have meetings, whether it's to talk about students, as it says up there, the student support teams, the SSTs, for those students who may be struggling but not on an IEP. The buildings have grade-level team meetings, where the teachers get together with their interventionists, their administration, and they talk about planning of curriculum, along with looking at the assessment of that same curriculum. And in red on purpose is adjust instruction to individual or group of students. That doesn't necessarily mean a student has to be failing to receive individualized instruction. We look at a child, and maybe they're struggling in a certain domain or certain area or a group of students. And then obviously, we use the data to inform our budget decisions. And then communication with families is of utmost importance, so that families can support the work that we're doing within the schools. And so, how do we use the data? We use tiered interventions, and that's a fancy term for looking at, where it's green up on the screen is Tier 1, and that's whole-group instruction based on evidence-based, research-based curriculum tools. Then there's Tier 2 instruction that can happen both in the classroom or in small-group intervention for at-risk students. And then there's Tier 3 interventions, which is in the red, which usually see about 5% to 10% of your population falling within Tier 3. And those students require intensive interventions, whether it's students on IEP or students who maybe have an individual success plan to support them in their individualized need. Okay. We also have data meetings, and so what is data-driven decision-making? It's when we, basically what I'm going to show you tonight, we look at these assessments, we look at areas of strengths, we look at curriculum taught, and then we discuss like anticipated outcomes from the meeting, like what do we hope to change? Is there a certain area where all students are struggling? Is that a curriculum thing? Is that an area where we might need to provide more professional development? Or do we see great success in a certain area and certain classrooms, and we want to figure out why are these classrooms successful and these classrooms maybe are struggling? And maybe there can be some teamwork together. We have progress monitoring meetings, and they take place after intervention cycles. We've talked about this a couple times before when I've been up here, and we look at the results, and I'm excited to share some of those with you tonight. And then what student progress are we actually analyzing? We are developing more and more our evaluation tools, so it isn't just one measure that we're looking at. We're looking at several measures for a particular skill. Okay. One of the measures that we use is DIBELS Amplify. And so, everyone says DIBELS, DIBELS, DIBELS. What does it actually mean? It's Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. The DIBELS Amplify, the state of Massachusetts has done a lot of work with early literacy and looking at gold standard products. They have a criteria they go through, and DIBELS is considered one of the gold standards for assessment for early literacy, K through 3. So there's more information you could find online about that if you want to do that as well. So on the next slide here, these are the subtests that are found, that we assess our students on, on the DIBELS assessment. So on the left-hand side of the screen or your presentation, it gives you the five areas of reading, so phonemic awareness, phonics, reading fluency, vocabulary, and reading comprehension. And then I put in there like, why is it important? And then the DIBELS measures, like what are the actual subtests that measure these areas of reading? I highlighted in yellow the subtests that relate directly to early literacy concerns, if there are concerns consistently, and helps us keep an eye out for those students who might be struggling in those different areas. So those areas would be phonemic segmentation fluency, or the abbreviation when you're looking at the test data is PSF. Nonsense word fluency, which is NWF. Word reading fluency, WRF. Oral reading fluency, ORF. There's another word, reading fluency, I didn't circle that. The other thing I wanted to note was, where it says reading comprehension, there's an assessment called MAES, and that assessment does not begin until grade 3 for our students. And then also at the very bottom, another subtest that we use, especially if we see a student struggling in the highlighted ones above, is called letter naming fluency, LNF. And those are early indicators for a reading disability, AKA, not necessarily always, but dyslexia is one. Okay, so now we're going to jump into the actual data for our students. So just to get us started, like what do all the colors mean? Blue means exceeding grade-level standards. Green is meeting grade-level standards. Yellow is partially meeting, and red is not meeting. So on this slide, all three grades, K through 3, are represented. On the left-hand side is our fall data, and on the right-hand side is the most recent winter or middle of the year data. So as you can see really clearly by comparing the two tables, that we've had such a great shift of students moving out of not meeting and partially meeting into meeting and exceeding. So that would be, let's see, a total of 68% of our students are classified as meeting or exceeding, whereas in the fall, that number was 59%. So some nice growth there. If we go more specifically and we look at the kindergarten, our kindergarten students, and we talked about this before, kindergarten experiences vary with the students that enter. Some kids have attended preschool since 3 years old, maybe some early intervention. Other students, this is their first classroom experience. So it's always interesting to look at this data to see where we... So it's always interesting to look at this data to see where we start and where we've gone. So, the kindergarten has made a complete turnaround from their beginning-of-the-year DIBEL score to their middle-of-the-year DIBEL score. So at the beginning of the year, we had 61% of our students who were partially meeting or not meeting. And now, that number is 32%. So a nice decrease in the percentage of students. At the same time, they, for meeting and exceeding, it was 39%. And now we're at 68% of our students as a mid-year benchmark. Then underneath are the categories I just talked about for students to be assessed on. The thing to note when looking at the data is that if a student has already passed, for example, letter names, they're not reassessed on the mid-year on that subtest because they've already passed. So the numbers, you got to dig a little deeper to actually look at student names, kind of like a crossover document to ensure like who's growing and who's still struggling. So I just wanted to make that point. Okay, grade one. Looking at the data points here. If you actually look at the numbers, the numbers of students changes, but the percentage remained the same from beginning of the year to mid-year. So it's a 71% of our students are exceeding or meeting the standards. So, thinking about, I'm often asked about like the subgroups. While I don't want to, you know, do anything identifying, we could talk about and say that the great news that this data doesn't necessarily show is that when looking at the mid-year, we have two of our Title I students who are meeting, who have been exited out of the Title I program. And we have seven of those students who are partially, which is a significant growth for them in terms of reading. And six students in Title I are identified as being two grade levels or below. But I think the great news is originally, at the beginning of the year, we had 11 of the students not making, the two years below, progress and four partially. So that shows a nice work of our Title I teachers as well as our classroom teachers. And so, for grade one, I broke it down just a little further. Because I, I know that there's interest in kind of digging in a little bit deeper, but I was also told to keep it kind of brief, so here we go. What's great news about the information here is that we are early identifying students for tier three supports. And in looking at the data between the beginning of the year to the mid-year, if you actually look at letter naming, we had 42 students who actually tested out between the beginning of the year and the mid-year. And so when we're also taking those subs tests around early literacy screeners to look for warning signs of early literacy concerns, we can clearly see as you go across that there are a number of students, and I'm happy to say they've already been identified through an IEP or through our Title I services, to have those indicators of needing additional support. Okay. Looking at grade two. Some nice growth here. We had nine more students moving into the exceeding from the fall to the winter. And we also had a reduction of nine students from not meeting and partially meeting into the meeting and exceeding categories. Looking at this, picking a different subgroup, so we'll talk about our, some of our special education students. We had two special education students who landed in exceeding in terms of their mid-year benchmark. We had two students on IEPs who are in the exceed, meeting. We had three of our second graders on IEPs who are partially meeting, and nine students who are not meeting. So I think that shows again, the hard work of our special education department and the growth of our students. And at the same time, shows us that we still have nine students that we need to look at a little bit deeper, making sure their IEPs align to the skills that they're struggling with. Okay, grade three. Looking at the DIBELS. So something I want to say about grades two and three, I would happen to be at a conference Thursday and Friday where we talked about national norms around reading. And across the nation, grades two and three have the lowest trend downward in terms of reading skills. I tried to get that number for us, I think it was something along the lines of 16%. And the reason being, research has shown that due to, you know, the events of COVID and the impact that it had on particularly the second and third graders who were in preschool and kindergarten, you can clearly kind of see that there's smaller growth margins in second and third grade. And so, keeping our eye on what are we going to do about that. Okay, so third grade. Let's see. The, the changes aren't as great. The thing to think about with third grade as well is there's a shift in the type of literacy instruction they receive. Because literacy turns into a higher level of comprehension beginning in third grade, where we move away from the more concrete into kind of more abstract thinking in terms of comprehension. But you typically see children by fifth grade catching up in terms of those comprehension skills. So in talking about our English learner students, for example, when looking at the information, we noticed that there were some nice trends of growth. Because this year, we really focused on ensuring that the English language learners were receiving language development with phonics embedded, but not strict phonics instruction through the L program. And that our Title I staff was implementing a phonics approach with the L students through Title I. So they're getting kind of double services, but both services reflect what they need as learners. Let's see. And the new literacy, I guess I'll call them frameworks, coming out or starting to come out, and will be implemented next year, require that we provide L services to preschool beginning next year. And that we make sure that in our instruction, that we're meeting the four areas for the student, the English language learners' achievements, so reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And that's something we've already started doing this year, knowing that these changes were coming. We learned it a little bit last year at a MatSal conference, as well as several literacy conferences as well. And this is just grade three by their subskills, which I just found like very interesting to look at. You can see, for example, in the oral reading fluency, there's tremendous growth, that's the second one over. You can see tremendous growth in our students who are meeting that standard. I know that our third grade teachers, working with interventionists, have done a lot more work around fluency. Okay, so now we're going to talk about I Ready. Oh, sorry. Yes.
Just before you move on to the elementary level, you talked about the challenges that you're seeing in grades two and three. What, what is it that you feel you're going to do to support the skills in those grade levels?
I talk about it a little bit during my SOA presentation as well. That's why I love doing them together, because they tie directly into each other. But I would absolutely recommend that we're digging deep and looking at those individual students who are not making that significant growth. We're currently doing that now and inviting those students, for example, to our summer lit camp or our accelerated academies. We're also ordering different materials. So we just placed an order for decodable books that can be sent home, so we can partner with parents around literacy. So those are just off the top of my head, a couple of, a couple of action steps that we're taking or will continue to take.
Have, just when you look at the data and then section small groups of students to interventionists, do you have enough interventionists to meet the needs of all the kids that are showing they could benefit from that?
I mean, we could always. Use more, because we do like to make sure that the groups are aligned to the students' needs. So gone are the days where it used to be, okay, five kids from your classroom and five kids from your classroom and five kids from your classroom. Now it's, okay, from Ms. Higgins' classroom, we have three kids who require decoding, and we have three kids who require fluency. So these three kids are going to go in the decoding group, and these three kids are going to go into the fluency group as much as possible. That's what we try to do. And then we're, that's where we see that nice growth, especially of the students receiving those Title I services. Yeah. Thank you. Welcome. Okay, so the I Ready diagnostic data for reading, we use it in grades four through eight. So it's some information about I Ready. It's an online program, assessment program that we use for reading and math. Math is for grades K through eight. It determines students' needs, it helps us specialize their learning. Everyone gets what's called My Path, which basically tells them, you know, the activities they could do to help strengthen their learning. We monitor progress throughout the year, and it has two parts to it. It has the diagnostic piece that we're getting really, really great at, being our first real full year of implementation, and we're moving into the progress monitoring piece. I will say, there are so many pieces of this program that we have not tapped into yet. But it will be amazing when we do, because it will help especially our early literacy learners. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but you see it up there. And so then, what are the domains? And it's great because I Ready aligns to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. So those domains that you see up there for reading on the left and math on the right align to the standards. The only little exception to that is where it says numbers and operation for grade three. There should also be a category that says fractions, but it doesn't. So fractions is embedded into numbers and operations for grades three, four, five, and up. So looking at the reading data, so I put like a little code on the side for the different subskills. So, in looking at the growth, and so on this data document, it's, the fall is on the top and the winter's underneath in green, and that's for grade four. And the blue is grade five. And so you can see some really nice growth for students on and above grade level. You see a nice shift to the left in terms of percentages of students. And while we do have some nice shifts there, we can definitely do better. I personally would like to see single digits in that last column, even on the mid-year. But we're getting there, it's like a work in progress. And then underneath, because we often talk about intervention, and I usually show the sunshiny part, I wanted to show the intervention part. So this is the percentage of students one or more grade level below. And it talks about, for example, phonological awareness. We're happy to say that all of our fourth and fifth graders are all set with that. The next column is phonics, so actually understanding all the letter sounds and blending them together to make words. So we have a little work to do there. Those students who are in those percentages are identified as a subcategory. The next column is high-frequency words. And that is fantastic, because if you think about all the subcategories, whether it be our special ed students or our English language learners or just our students who are struggling with literacy, high-frequency words is an area of strength for them. Vocabulary. This would be the first time that they're assessed in vocabulary, starting in fourth grade. So that could be like a little test anxiety, a little not quite sure what to do here. But again, we need to monitor that. The overall comprehension score, again, that's why it says lit and then info. So the first column for lit is comprehension literature, that's your basic, like your read and respond. But then your informational comprehension is you're reading about information and you need to do more inferring to answer. But we, we know that's not, not typical for grades four and five. Then grade six through eight. The yellow is sixth grade, the pink is seventh grade, and the green is eighth grade. Again, some nice growth here. Again, first year giving the assessment. I don't necessarily think that these percentages 100% are accurate, because when I compare this data to like our MCAS data and conversations with the administration, I think our students are doing a little bit better than this. But also, we've had a lot of students who maybe this is their first or second year within the district. So coming in in a middle school, depending on what your previous learning experiences were, can some, be a little bit of a challenge. At the bottom are the domains. And so we can see here that phonemic awareness and phonics are both at practically 100%. High-frequency words is 100%. There's that vocabulary again. And so I know that Principal Marcos has done a nice job with his staff talking about vocabulary across different content areas. And Dr. Abrams has also supported that, along with tying it into comprehension, regular lit and information, like bringing that all together for students in their reading and their writing. Yes.
A placement by domain on this slide.
Is that just the mid-year data that you're displaying here?
Yes, that's just the mid-year.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, because that, it's interesting for grades four and five in the comprehension, there's actually some very nice growth from the, from the fall to winter. Even though those numbers are obviously higher than we would like them to be. Some significant improvement over that span of months, so.
Right.
That's good.
Great instruction.
Thank you.
Okay. So previously, I was asked like if we could follow a student and see some growth or see what, some of the documents we look at. So, I'm sorry, that's a little grainy, I don't know why it's a little grainy. But this, for example, is a report that we could receive for each child in I Ready. And it identifies the student's strengths and areas of concerns according to the Massachusetts Curriculum Framework standards. So this little model, this is not one of our students, this is just a sample right now. On the top, it shows, I guess it's got the little orange box, it says diagnostic one. So that would be fall data. And it shows, let's see, six, seven, seven different standards in the blue box, what the standards are. And then all the way to the right, the green box shows all Xs, meaning the student does not have the skills to be successful in knowing the standard. So then there's instruction that happens, because remember, when we are assessing students, it's on the standards they have not been taught yet. What we're looking for is to see their previous knowledge come forward and applied to their current tasks, because the standards kind of spiral and grow and build on each other. So the picture underneath in the orange box is diagnostic two, so that would be the mid-year. Again, the same standards are on the left-hand side. But then you can see in the green box that the student has now achieved six out of the seven standards successfully after instruction and possibly intervention. So that's just kind of a model. This next slide is an actual student of ours. It's a fourth-grade student. This student happens to be an English language learner as well. It shows here five of the reading standards under literature, key ideas, and details. It tells you description of the standard. If you go all the way over to the last column, that's diagnostic one. And it shows on the first two standards at the beginning of the year, the student has not a complete understanding, but a somewhat of an understanding of the work required under those standards. And then the last three standards, the student does not. But then you can see on diagnostic two how much the student has grown. So what this tells us is that for standard RL 2.1, which is ask and answer questions, who, what, where, when, why, how, and demonstrate understanding and key details and text, the student still needs more work. They didn't, it didn't show growth, they probably had some growth, but not enough to say that they have mastered that standard. But then you go to the next standard, which is RL 2.1, probably B, and answer such questions. So answering questions, the student has mastered it. So that tells us a lot of information alone right there. So when asked directly, more concrete. So when asked directly, more concrete, the student is able to respond. But in other ways, they need more support. And then you can see the student grew in the bottom three standards with two of them mastery and one of them on the cusp of partially meeting.
Go ahead.
So if you don't mind, I have some questions on the literacy before you move on to math.
Oh, sure.
And I also have a few questions that I don't want to put you on the spot. So I might send, I might email you and follow up. Because I think we've done that in the past, where you can follow up. Going back to the early, well, first of all, I wanted to focus on this because I think this sort of reflects an important part of your presentation, which is the data meetings. And I wonder if you could just talk a little bit more about the data meetings. It sounds like that's literally what you do. You kind of look at each student and you identify, you kind of analyze the data together and you kind of identify what needs to happen over the next few months or whatever, right? These data meetings are happening after every assessment period or are they just happening?
Yes. And that happens at the building-based level.
Yep.
So what happens is, for example, I can talk about the Title I team, for example. Make it a little bit more streamlined. So the Title I teams, they have certain students they're working with under certain domains and categories. And then after our MTSS cycle of six to eight weeks, we assess them again. We do the progress monitoring to see who still requires assistance in what areas. Has it changed or which students have grown? So if a student has grown typically two cycles, then we kind of release them. We watch them. They don't just go off and we say, you're done. But they're kind of on a watch. But then there might be other students who we're pulling in who require supports. So that's pretty much how it's done.
So one of my questions, as I was looking at the data, is do you have a sense of how many students, like in that red, for this is for early literacy, in that like red-yellow category are able, like are in a frequent intervention category, like that you know, get regular intervention? Do you have a sense of that? Like you have that data, right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
So that would be helpful to know. And maybe I can just follow up.
Yes, absolutely. So we can identify by name every single student in all the different categories. And we do, like we have internal spreadsheets and reports from iReady that we use and we kind of put them together. Plus, we have, and we'll talk about this during the SOA presentation, we have the Google Data Analytics that takes all the data, including historical, and pulls it together. So we can pull one student's name and we can see their history and their current data trends. So, yeah, great questions.
Yeah, so mainly my questions are just that, like fine-tuning the data. I think one bigger question I have is, and it sort of relates to what I just asked, which is do you, you know, I look at those numbers and if you break it down by percentages, which I think is maybe a little bit better way to think about it for me. It's, you know, and I know we have challenges because of COVID and we know we have other challenges, but it does seem like the green and blue should be a little higher. Maybe you have that same impression. So I guess I wonder how many of those yellow and red are, for example, students that don't have similar resources at home? For example, our lower-income students. And understanding, you know, is that something we have to focus on as a district a little more? Is making sure that we're pulling those students up that don't have other resources at home?
Yeah. And again, during the SOA. Great. It's all about, not all about, but a lot about our low-income students because that is, that is our category of greatest need in the entire district. And that encompasses many different other subgroups. But as a whole, it is a concern. Yes. Okay. Okay. So next, we're going to go on to math. And so on this slide here, it also shows the red arrow to show that currently we're using the diagnostic assessment, K to eight. And that is the consistency piece that everybody's utilizing. Along with that, because we adopted Ready Math for grades K through five, some teachers have dabbled into the next step down, which is the unit assessments. Plus, as you can see, there's, within the lesson, there are comprehension checks that they can utilize. There's activity-based assessments. And then down in the purple, it's like data chats and talks and something that they call try it, use it, model it. I maybe I got that order wrong, but. So the hope is in the future, like looking down the road, I would say maybe three years, that we're implementing all of those tools to get the best, well-rounded picture and supports for our students. So I just wanted to make that clear. Okay. So iReady Math, K to three. We saw some really strong growth again in kindergarten. 50% increase in students who are on or above grade level. So that is nice to see and that zero students are in the tier three for math. Let's see. So also, when looking at this, I always like to just talk about the positive. And looking at the tier one group, we talk about subgroups. So we have one of our L students who's on grade level in that number and four who are partially meeting out of all five L students. So in kindergarten, none of those students are two grade levels below. I think that's pretty impressive. In grade one, we have one English language learner on level and five who are partially meeting. And what you'll start to see is a trend that a lot of our English language learners, where they're getting their most need from is the standards called measurement and data and geometry. So obviously, in Europe, they use the metric system and we don't use that here. So that's one lens, one layer of reteaching that we need to do. And plus, there's a lot of language around the charts and reading charts and the X and the Y and interceptions and all of that. So that was something that the data did show. The students who are struggling, especially when you look at the second and third grade area, there's been some nice growth there. But these are the students that we kind of look at and say, okay, they would benefit from the Math Accelerated Academy. Or they would benefit from after-school programming around math specifically. And again, when we do the acceleration programs or like the after-school, it isn't one-size-fits-all. We actually plan it around certain standards. And the teachers who work those camps do an excellent, excellent job with that. Okay. So when we look at K through three by domain, so again, like I had talked about, you see the, most of the time, you see the highest area of students struggling. While there is a lot of wonderful growth, is in measurement data and geometry. Number sense and operations and algebraic thinking. We've seen a lot of nice growth there, upwards to 20% in each category. But we know like what we need to look at there. This is grade four. Again, same sort of thing that we notice a lot of nice growth. We see 10% in the fifth grade. Students had decreased from one grade level below and had increased significantly on level and above grade level. And again, remembering that K through five, this is their first year in full implementation of the Ready Math program. They've been receiving professional development throughout the year to support this implementation. And we're becoming more and more consistent on instruction, classroom-to-classroom, grade-to-grade vertically aligned. So I expect to see these percentages grow exponentially over the next couple of years. Okay. And then six to eight, iReady Math. Again, you can see some nice growth in math. Starting in sixth grade is when we enter a little bit more challenging standards. For example, equalities start in sixth grade, ratios, proportions, right? So there's a higher level of math happening here. I know that Principal Marcos is looking very carefully at this data as well. And we were talking, actually just today, about diving a little deeper into the iReady Math as a supplement to the Envisions Math that we're currently using to maybe close some gaps that we see here. Okay, that's part one of my presentation. Yes.
Can you talk a little bit more about grade eight? Because I think in the fall and perhaps last year as well, that was the, I think, the most troubling grade level, if I remember correctly. It's just their achievement numbers. And now this is a, you know, new batch of eighth graders that I'm seeing very little movement in both literacy and math. So what do you, what do you think is happening in grade eight? What sort of adjustments do you feel like you're going to make for the second half of the year?
So, how do I say it? So looking at grade eight, we have identified and we know who the students are. There is a high number, and I'm not saying this is the whole cause because I don't believe that because of child's on IEP or English language learners, that's the reason why there's the low shift in numbers. But there are 106 kids on IEPs, six to eight, and 14 L students within those categories. So I think that it's more global, looking at what are we doing for our students on IEPs? Are they identified as having a math goal would be one thing. And then looking at our English language learners. And while we focus on language acquisition, are we also focusing on the vocabulary of math? Because it becomes very important, especially, it's always important, but particularly important, middle school as you go into high school. Because if you don't have those common terms in middle school, when you go to high school, it's just that much more difficult. So I think those are two areas that we could absolutely be digging deeper into. And then what interventions are actually happening within the classroom setting? And are we using all the tools provided in our curriculum tool of Envisions Math? The other thing about eighth-grade math specifically is that some students are really invested in like the algebra piece. And so we just need to make sure that all of our standards are being taught to proficiency. But honestly, Mr. Marcos and his team would probably give you a more clear answer. So, but those are, from my lens, looking at it, those are what I would say.
Superintendent, I would love if, you know, perhaps the memo later or maybe Mr. Marcos could come back at a different time just to talk about eighth grade because I know it's been a challenging area. You know, I don't disagree with anything Ms. Polito said. But respectfully, I don't think the demographics of students, just because we've been looking at the eighth grade, this eighth-grade challenge for a couple of years in a row now. And, you know, those kids that were challenging areas the last couple of years are no longer in those numbers, right? It's like, it's a whole new group of kids that is hitting this every year. And I think in the fall, you also mentioned that, you know, the M-CAS test assesses these certain standards that, you know, we taught in October. And so by April, when they take the test, they might have forgotten it. But again, I'm not sure that accounts for like these numbers because right now, this is the beginning of the year, the middle of the year. You know, that doesn't, that might explain kind of the M-CAS numbers, but it doesn't explain these numbers. So I still think there's something happening in eighth grade where kids just don't seem to be growing, right? They seem stagnant, at least for the first half of the year. And I'm, you know, hoping we'll see some movement for the second half of the year. But I feel like we need to do something different. And I guess the reason I'm saying that is because I'm sure that you have interventions in place. I know that you do. The principal's talked about it before. But without seeing the growth in the numbers, I'm not sure if the interventions are effective. And so then the question's like, well, why not? What else? What do we need to do differently?
Yeah, and I think when Mr. Marcos presented, I think the focus was really on algebra, with the idea of having our middle school students leave eighth grade with algebra as they go into the high school and advanced math. And I think, you know, part of this isn't necessarily the students that need extra support, but it was that initiative of really trying to elevate the math and the geometry concepts, which is also part of the M-CAS piece. So when they looked at it collectively as a grade, they recognized that with the idea of having all students have the Algebra I completed, that they neglected some of those geometry standards. But yeah, I think Mr. Marcos and his team is, you know, they could come in and present some of the things that they're doing, so.
Or even a responsive writing, which was easier for him.
Might be easier, yeah. And then, but I know that that's one, that was like, almost like a catch-22 is we really want to push some of the accelerated math and algebra. But, you know, when you start looking at what the M-CAS standards are, there were some geometry concepts that the math team is now like refocusing this year on, so. But yeah. And I think the other piece too is the implementation of the data teams, vertical data teams, the team grade. I think data is now, especially over the past few years, is a big aspect of these teacher meetings. So as we're looking at student achievement, especially, you know, here, a lot of the information is individualized. And then it provides teachers with an opportunity to work on strategy, so. But yeah, we can follow up with a memo to everybody.
Yeah, and I think, I think, remember Higgins brings up a good point, like, and I think we've talked about this before, just sort of thinking about the historical trends within classes, within grades, not to try to like point fingers at groups of teachers. And that's not my intention at all, but just maybe to understand if there's additional resources needed for those grade levels. And I think, I appreciate you remembering about the eighth grade because honestly, I don't know that I remembered that. But having that kind of understanding that it's not, it may not just be the cohort, the group, that specific group of students that's having, although that could be a factor too. But if there's a trend year after year in a certain grade, having that context. So maybe we could figure out a way to integrate that on a yearly basis into these presentations so we have a sense of that historical trend.
Well, my question was going to be the same, was just not now because you're doing, beginning of the year to the middle of the year. But that would be really helpful to have sort of what the middle-of-the-year scores look like year on and year out and to see. Do you have a sense, just broadly, I mean, do you feel good about where those numbers look? I mean, you're looking at 72%. I mean, roughly 70%, give or take, across a lot of the grades, meaning or exceeding. Is that, does that roughly trend line year over year?
For mid-year data, yes.
Okay.
Yes. I'm not alarmed. There are certain like little instances where I'm questioning and asking lots of questions. But in terms of mid-year data, we're trending in the right direction. But I don't want to just rely on that. So that's why at the elementary level, for example, our Title I students who are still not meeting standards, even though they've had now at least two rounds of intervention, we're doing an iReady, actually, early literacy assessment to see what are we missing? What is, what is this data on top of all the other data we have show about our students and how we're going to do it differently? Kind of like what you were saying about eighth-grade math.
That's great, thank you.
And remember, a lot of these standards, the standards, because it's ongoing and daily, so a lot of these standards the students haven't seen yet.
Yeah, that was my other question.
Yeah, so they're being introduced to a standard and then being tested.
Well, and the test itself, meaning it is, I mean, there's big jumps, which is great in some classes. Is some of that, because the iReady is relatively new in our district, is the familiarity with the test matter? Meaning I imagine some of these kids.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Because we haven't even gotten into like the developmental acuity, I guess I'll say, of each different grade level, right? And so there's something to be said, you have to think of a certain percentage as test anxiety, right? Like how are the students taking the tests? Do they need to either be pulled out or do they need to be taken in the classroom? So I had a conversation with a teacher and they were talking about their experience as a child taking a test and how they always wanted to be pulled out of the room. Because what they did was they were constantly looking at the clock going, that person finished two minutes, that person finished three minutes, that person finished four minutes. And they had such anxiety by the time it was their turn to, you know, do the test that they didn't achieve as well as they actually could.
Not a measurement of their acquired skills.
Yes.
You're going to, the ongoing classroom feedback and assessments that are going on with each teacher and the student and the family, that's where you're going to really see the growth in the bank for your buck and on the instruction. This is very helpful, this data. But as you said, you know, there could be other, you know, factors. And plus, if you're, you know, we're teaching the students on information they haven't seen yet. So it's, you're going to expect students, you know, to throw up the process to start in one place in the beginning of the year. And then by the end of the year, hopefully, it's showing growth, individual growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, so. But it's, I just want to credit not only the structure that Ms. Polito has implemented, but when we go into the data me- but when we go into the data meetings and teachers are really talking about students, you know, on a daily basis, and then they can stop monitoring, you know, from interventions or assistance, but they know their students pretty well, so. But that's been the whole, I think, shift district-wide, is to utilize the student individual data to inform instruction, to develop that small groups within the classroom and not necessarily, you know, pull out and, and all of that. We do have that capability, but the, the teachers sharing resources and best practice is also another big component that won't show up on this type of data.
Also, I was gonna say, and maybe you can verify this, but I'm imagining that the, we're seeing better growth in K through five because they're using the Ready Math curriculum. So the curriculum is completely aligned with the assessment.
Which is another.
The whole, you know, we don't like to say we're teaching to the test, but in this case, the curriculum, you know, you show the, the sort of options of assessments down the line there. And so teachers are really probably digging into that down to the daily assessments. And so the kids are more prepared for the test because the curriculum is fully aligned with the assessment. That's, I'm sure that's at least part of why we're not seeing as strong growth in sixth grade.
It could be presented like in a different way because research.
Yeah, I'm saying it may be a little bit misleading, just because they don't have the same assessment.
When we're taking the MCAS test, we're hopefully not teaching to the test. Because the MCAS test is the standards that we're supposed to be teaching in that grade level, right? So if we're, if we have the proper curriculum tools, then it should be gleaned out in our assessments. And so that's part of the conversation as well, too. And research says that when you use an assessment tool that aligns your curriculum tool, that's when you get your, your best results.
And that, that bears out here.
Because it is, exactly.
I just want to say too, just, you know, as far as like ongoing, so I-ready is new for the most part. But like, something like my perspectives, we've been using for a while now. So, I mean, are we evaluating ongoing with that as well? Because it is true, probably like the last two years, we're not seeing as much. I think we've made some investments, you know, K to five, you know, like learning to read things. We're looking about reading to learn, you know, we're seeing vocab comprehension, you know, informational text, those areas, maybe not as much. Is there things we're thinking about there or?
Yeah, so we have a curriculum renewal cycle that puts all of our curriculum tools, I think I presented at the beginning of last year, that puts all our curriculum tools on a cycle so that nothing is like falling through the cracks. For example, the elementary math program was utilized since 2011 in the district. And it was just going to use and roll over, roll over. But now what we do is, as we go through the cycle, we start evaluating. And I believe my perspectives is up for review, if not next year, but definitely the following year, for us to look at and say, okay, what, what data are we gleaning from the usage of this program? How consistency is this program being utilized, right? So that comes to conversations around the building administration, okay? To what fidelity do you see your staff, through your walkthroughs and observations utilizing this curriculum tool? Because what we want to get away from is that each classroom is doing something that's a little bit different. Because then those students rise up to the next grade and, you know, there's discrepancies and knowledge gaps. So I think that's some of the work we're also doing. We've created curriculum maps. Literacy is all done, K through 12. But it isn't like a stagnant map. So we go back, we review, we look at it, what worked this year? That didn't, you know, work last year, what are we going to change? That's kind of the long-winded answer of yes, we're, we're looking at it through many different lenses. Okay, all right.
Take a deep breath and proceed, because then it's the Student Opportunity Act.
And next up, okay. I told Ms. Walker, if I say grant, she's supposed to like, give me the, because this is not a grant.
Thanks for that reminder.
We're looking at you and practicing.
So the Student Opportunity Act of 2024 is very different than in previous years, and I'm going to talk about why. This presentation is just an overview of the actual grant that you had in your packet. What needs to happen is we need to have a vote for school committee approval. If you approve, so that then the grant can be submitted. No, plan, 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 plan. I'm gonna say plan, plan, practice, plan. Okay, so the, for short, the SOA Plan for 24 through 27 is to ensure that every student in the Commonwealth has access to high-quality public education, regardless of their zip code. And the two key levers are around fiscal, like changes to Chapter 70 funding. There's been a renewed investment to education and funding. Also, they did a revision funding formula to reflect the equitable distribution of state education funding. There are several districts through that revision of funding need to do amendments. We're not one of them. And then also policy updates. So the plan needs to be revisited or redone every three years. But annually, we need to report back on all of our, as you'll see, our evidence-based practices. And what we're doing is, we had to look at disparities in learning and experiences and outcomes for student groups that are least, they call least well-served, okay? So every district in the Commonwealth needed to develop this plan. Okay, so a question that comes up is that, is this looking at our additional Chapter 70 funding that we, that we receive and using that money? The answer is no, that's a thing of the past. They, the plan is to say, what are we currently doing in our district to support our underserved students? After we identify them, and what are some things we might do in the, in the three-year future? So when they're talking about underserved students, they're categorizing it as English learners, students with disabilities, and low-income students. In looking at the disparities for student groups and the underlying causes that will lead us to our evidence-based practices, I'll talk about those connections later in the presentation. We have a plan developed that aligns to, but is different from our district improvement plan. They are two different things. So the SOA Plan should complement the district improvement plan, but should actually have a lot more detail. Also, without, throughout the grant, I needed to document like other opportunity through the plan. I needed to document other grants, see, that's where grants come in, other grants that we're using to support our students. So for example, like our title grants. So we receive Title I, II, and IV, and we're a part of a consortium for Title III grants. And we should continue as a systematic approach to analyze data, get stakeholder feedback, and continue with our family engagement. And you should see that this plan aligns to the previous target areas addressed in like the title grants, et cetera. So targets for three-year improvement, they are requirement of the legislation. And then what, another piece that we're looking at is a three-year improvement target for literacy and math, looking at what Desi has designated as our lowest 25th percentile of students. Usually it's by school and district, but because we only have one grade per school, our numbers are the same for district and school. So each principal has been given their list of who their lowest 25th percentile groupings are. And I've asked them to categorize them, whether they fall into one of the subgroups we talked about, or maybe it's chronic absenteeism, or any other category that they see some alignment. And so that from there can help with action plans as we move forward. And then we worked at our last principal's meeting to gather information and ideas of strengths, challenges, opportunities, and areas of growth that they see for the next, over the next three years. Okay, so our three targets for improvement are English language learner curriculum enhancement. So we've already started our investment in evidence-based English language learner curriculum tools from pre-K to 12. And this investment aims to ensure language acquisition and create vertical alignment across our schools, and also looking at the various categories of learning. So we have our students who are Level 1 and 2, that's beginning phases of language acquisition. And plus, we also have students who are Level 3 and 4, which are more advanced. So we're providing curriculum tools for the needs of all the various groups of our English language learner students. Started Innovative Pathway Program at Newbury High, Newburyport High School, focused on engaging opportunities for students underrepresented in advanced education and aligned to the Massachusetts Career Technology Education Designation Criteria. Superintendent, is okay if I share? So we got amazing news on Friday afternoon, while sitting in a Panera, that new report has been approved for our environmental science pathway. Yay! So Principal Wolf and I and the team, we were elated. And not only did we receive the $75,000 that we asked for, we received an additional $200,000 on top of that for the next four years. So we are just so happy about that. So that, those numbers will change in this, I didn't want to change it now before I spoke about it. But we're very, very excited, and Principal Wolf is already talking about doing two more next year. And continue to launch accelerated academy programs and provide targeted support for select low-income, English language, and special education students district-wide. So up to this point, most of the time, the accelerated, accelerated programs, we used funding, for example, like the Afghan Grant, it was just for L, English language learners. This will open it up, my hope is to open it up so that we have more diverse groups working together who have the same needs. Okay, so what data was used to analyze to come to these conclusions? So the Department of Ed has come up with some amazing new tools. So the one that has Newburyport in the cranberry color, that's the new student outcomes comparison tool. It's a new resource where we can review data across groups and look at critical indicators to pinpoint where disparities in learning experience and outcomes are most prevalent. It's also known as the District Heat Map. So it's kind of like a graphical representation of data. And when you look at it, anything in that cranberry color is a subgroup that has the biggest gap between all students and, and that subgroup according to the category above it. We also use the Google Data Analytics that we've talked about before. And then on the right-hand side is my little data chart that I put right into the SOA Plan for the state. And that just shows the different subgroups. And then highlighted in yellow is the group that has the biggest disparity from all students. Something to recognize here is only grades 6 and 10 had enough students to make a cohort for our English language learners. However, when looking at the actual students who make up these numbers, our English language learners oftentimes fell into a different subgroup anyway and, and made up those numbers. So three-year targets, increased performance of the lowest-performing students in ELAN math. We set kind of, we're setting kind of ambitious targets for three-year improvement as is required by the legislature for us. The Commissioner's Office, I'll say, has designated the lowest-performing students as the group to be looked at. So we talked with our building administration about that. And the reason for that is they had said it will streamline their process a little bit more when having consistent outcomes to be looking at. Let's see. Okay, family engagement. So how can we say that we've been using family and caregiver engagement? Or what are some things we can continue to do in the future? So mutual partnerships. So I know Superintendent's worked really hard on cultivating a mutual respect and trust of our families and ensuring open lines of communication. So an example of that was when we did the strategic plan back in 2021, where, you know, we had all those different groups, over 800 people came and gave their feedback to our strategic plan. And the feedback that we got is they didn't realize all the wonderful things that had already been happening in the district, and so we were able to build upon that. So that's just an example of a mutual partnership. Aligned objectives. So to link our engagement efforts with student learning objectives and curriculum details, making sure we're sharing the assessment data with our families. And then, for example, like at our open houses, what are the educational expectations that we have in our classrooms and making that clear to work in partnership with our families and caregivers? Community involvement. I think that Newburyport Public Schools does an amazing job with community involvement, whether it's through Pettingill House that we work with, the Rotary, NEF. So we extend the values of our school district with these outside stakeholders so that we can work in tandem together. And of course, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Just looking at the diverse backgrounds, as Newburyport is changing over time, and being sensitive to the needs of those who may need translation. Or we're celebrating like the Iftar, for example, it was such an amazing turnout, where people in the community came to share with our families from Afghanistan around the Iftar. So those are some examples. So what are some action steps that we're going to take for engagement? Now, each thing I'm talking about is, is a piece of the plan, but I'm just kind of like spelling, pulling it out and spelling it out, so I don't go into a lot of detail. So targeted communication. So for student groups, targeted accelerated improvements to those subgroup families, making sure we're providing clear, consistent, regular communication, whether it's progress reports. For example, with the new early literacy plans, that making sure that we send that data information within the first 30 days of giving the assessment. Making sure that when we're having meetings with our English language learner families, that we have the appropriate translation, whether it be through our family liaison or calling in an interpreter to support. Family workshops and training. So for example, for a Title I, while it's mandated to do one, we do at least two family gatherings a year to get together with our families, to talk about our program, to answer their questions. We had a family math night last year when we were, finally had decided on the I-ready math. And we brought families in to learn about the program. Obviously, parent advisory committees, each building has an established committee, as well as, for example, SISL is another example, or the Superintendent's Advisory Council. Those are just a couple. Our middle school and high school are implementing student-led conferences, which is sharing student voice and having students engage and their parents engage in their students' learning. And then resource sharing could be things that we're sharing out in our newsletters, open houses at each school. Those are some of the things that we are currently doing. And obviously, we can add on as, especially as our tech, technology becomes more and more prevalent in our schools. Okay, evidence-based programs to address disparities. So these are the evidence-based programs. The wording comes right from the state, they give you kind of like a menu and you look at your data and decide, after looking at the strategic objective, which evidence-based practices you're currently using or going to develop further. So it's not on here, but the strategic objective that we're, it was hard, but the data clearly showed that strategic objective two, which is promote deeper learning, so that's all students engage in grade-level work that is real-world, relevant, and interactive. And then we have objective three, develop and sustain a workforce that is diverse, culturally responsive, well-prepared, and committed to continuous improvement so that all students have equitable access to effective educators. So our focus is going to be on early literacy, as it has been, but early literacy is continuing to evolve within the state, and we want to make sure we stay in lockstep with that. make sure we stay in lockstep with that. Our early literacy screening and support. So we're looking to possibly add iReady, Early Literacy Screener with DIBELS to just have some more information. Effective use of the WEDA frameworks. So those are the frameworks that all of our special ed, general ed, and L teachers need to be very well aware of and how to implement those frameworks into our classrooms. And I'll talk in more detail in a minute. Targeted academic support and acceleration for our acceleration academies, whether it be summer, or one of the breaks, or after school, and enhanced pathways to increase diversity. So part of our pathway plan that we wrote needed to include, like how are we going to support the underserved populations in our district? And so the team came up with, you know, there's going to be a lottery of students who want to participate in the pathway program, and ensuring that a certain percentage is saved for those students who are in the underserving population. Or if they don't meet the criteria, what supports are we going to provide them so that they can come on board to that program? So district supports, FY '25 to '27, early literacy screener. So like I said, DIBELS M-class, we're currently using iReady. We're looking to bring in a little bit more. Aligned reading and ELA curriculum, pre-K to six. So we've done a lot of work with that around curriculum mapping. Supplemental resources, the iReady diagnostic and instruction, and there are so many other tools. Especially designed intervention tools, for example, Orton Gillingham, RAVO, Lips, iReady. In working with Deb O'Connor and Wes Pierce before that, we worked together to make sure that our special education staff, I would say at this point, maybe 80% are Orton Gillingham-trained, certified. Yeah. So a recommendation is for not, for FY '26 is an early literacy director-coach, meaning somebody who is very versed in not only general education reading, but special education, and uses a program, for example, or strategies from Crafting Minds, which is a program that talks about the science of reading. Like it really gets into how the brain works in terms of reading, talks about assessments that you give to students and how it creates a profile for them so that you can really target it, target the areas of need for those students. And that would be supportive to help students receive general ed interventions and not necessarily be pushed into the special ed realm. And then English language learner curriculum tools. We have purchased the RIGER program, which is a program for grades four through 12 that is for our newcomers or level one, two, WEDA-standard students, that in a mature way looks at early literacy skills. National Geographic and the Elevations Program. High-quality secondary pathways and programs, dual enrollment, and I have pathways again. Must like that. And then focused professional development. So looking at the WEDA frameworks, the Office of Language and Acquisition has an excellent website. They revamped the whole thing. But there are five webinar series of WEDA training for free. So I could envision next year, taking some of our professional development time and utilizing that time to have everyone in the same room, learning, and then talking about implementation within our classrooms of those frameworks. And then, of course, the multi-tiered systems of support that we're currently using. So what's next? What happens after all of this? And let's say we get our vote tonight. So between April and June, the plans will be reviewed by the DESI SOA team. They are going to focus on the plan. Does it meet the requirements? Is it responsive to the prompts that we were given? I did call a meeting with a member of the SOA team because I wanted to make sure that we were, or I was, on track and got excellent feedback. So I felt good about that. I was a little nervous. And so the other thing to note is that even though this is a written plan that will be submitted, it's a flexible plan. So we can make changes over the next three years to the plan, additions, subtractions, et cetera.
Thank you.
Yes, I just have one, one comment. I wanted to go back to, you don't have to go back to the slide, but I wanted to go back to the family engagement piece that you talked about and some of the action steps that you were going to take for increased family engagement. And so just a couple of comments I was trying to solidify in my mind as you were talking is, a lot of the things that you all mentioned, which are all great things, but they are very, there are a lot of the district pushing information to families. And I'm wondering how you can bulk up the two-way communication piece, right? How are we hearing more from families? How do we ask them, right? Like is there ways to, you know, survey families or talk to them or have focus groups to say, what type of information do you need from us? You know, because you all put out a lot of information. I mean, there's newsletters and we're, like, there's so much. So it's maybe asking some of these families, particularly in some of these student groups, you know, what type of information do you want to receive from us? Do you think you need to receive more of? Is there anything that we can do to help clarify? Is there information that's confusing to you, right? Because the education system in our country is very different from some other, you know, Caribbean, Central American, South American countries where these families are coming from. So it's like, what is the education system different? How are the expectations different? Culturally, they view teachers differently, right? And then in some cultures, it might be, you know, the teachers in school, like those are the professionals. I have nothing to add. I said to them. And so when we have a perception of like, oh, that parent must not care about their child's education, it's actually just a cultural difference where they're supposed to leave that domain to the professionals and not get involved. So how do we sort of like have that two-way communication where we're figuring out what is it that they want from us? How do they want to communicate with us? And if there's any family that, you know, is worried about their documentation status and feels worried about coming into schools, right? Schools, we know are safe places, but they don't really know that. So like, who else in the community are these families maybe partnered with? And like, can we be sharing resources that way, right? Can we, can we come at it through like a third party that might feel safer? So, I mean, those are just kind of like general ideas, but it was just the point of, some of the action steps here felt very one-way, and I'm wondering how we can also get information from families.
Yes. So I didn't do a great job, Tom, with that. So in order to make this plan, I needed to receive feedback. So I did do surveys with families, for example, with Title I families and our English language learner families, and then through the vertical team, all different places, because we do definitely want that two-way communication. We have opportunities, for example, at our school councils for parents to, you know, give that feedback, that two-way feedback. At SISL, while we have one extraordinary parent, but she's amazing and she gives some great feedback. And also at the Superintendent's Advisory Council, I know he's very cognizant of receiving feedback. So I think that we could always add more. We want to know because we serve the community.
Yeah. I think those are all really great places, but they're also privileged places. And so how do we, how do we get, you know, families that are not going to necessarily have the time or capacity or resources or be asked to serve in those places either?
Yeah. So just as a side note, as, keep talking, I'm just percolating in my head. On Tuesdays, and I haven't been able to personally honestly attend on Tuesdays, we usually have our district meeting at that time, but we gather, Kathy, sometimes you're on that meeting as well, at three o'clock with the newcomer community and all various different stakeholders, where they can, we talk about all different sorts of things. But, oh, we can always do better, so I appreciate that.
Ms. Walker?
Yeah, so appreciate the plan. I guess I'm just asking some basic sort of how this plan fits into our funding. And I know you said it wasn't a grant. But at the end of your, at the, one of the slides with their, the planned form, there's an estimate of our total investment, which is about $825,000 over three years. So I guess, could you, could you share a little bit about how, where that funding comes from and how this plan informs that funding?
Excellent question. Sorry. I should have probably included that, with the $1,000 tab on there. So that is funding that we're already allocating and spending right now, whether it's through our operational budget or through grants that have been written. They, through this SOA plan, they wanted us to list expenditures that we currently have. And so the only expenditure listed in this whole plan that is not accounted for is the early literacy teacher for FY '26. That's the only position not accounted for. Like I said, I do need to update this for the pathway grant because that's not listed here. And so then what happens is the SOA team is going to look at our plan and say, where are the areas that we could potentially support this district? Because remember at the beginning, I was talking about equitable distribution of funds. So right now, and that was a hard thing for a lot of districts, because we wanted to know, like, how much money do we have? Like, how much do we spend? And they're very crystal clear, like, stop asking that question, relax. Like, we just wanted to know, with or without money, what are your plans? What are you going to do to support our underserved students? And so that's kind of the view to take when looking at this.
Do you think that that early literacy teacher has potential for funding through other sources?
Yeah, down the road.
Because I, I think I see a real need for that. And I'm just disappointed that we couldn't do it this year. Do you think, I mean, that's something.
Yeah.
If not identified it as a potential need, we can sort of keep our eyes out.
Exactly. And I, and I think there's two things. I think this, this plan is also tied directly into our strategic plan. So a lot of the work that we've been doing to close the achievement gap is already articulated in our strategic plan. And then, as always, looking at our resources, you know, what we do every budget season, prioritizing different areas and reallocating funds within the operational budget. So part of this plan is a continued focus on our early literacy. So that would, you know, a big, big piece of that. So.
I'm just curious about, if we're voting on this actual plan, but you mentioned that you can change it, add things, subtract things, what happens if that happens in a year? Is our vote to accept it with potential changes?
Yeah, I think.
And the funding they may need?
Well, there's a, the.
Or is this one of those votes that we kind of got to rubber stamp it?
As a former mayor.
That the state says we have to.
The funding piece, so this is a plan. This is not, you know, as they're saying, a grant. So there's probably no.
You're sure it's not a grant?
There's probably not going to be, we don't anticipate additional funding through SOA. But part of this is for us to continue to close the achievement gap for the subgroups that we've been talking about, I think, for, for years. And this plan works with the state on how we're going to do that. So moving forward with the vote, this is our plan. Part of the SOA Student Opportunity Act is to report out. So let's say next year or mid-year, we're reporting, and then we recognize that, oh, we have to adjust, you know, this plan or refocus on this. That would be part of the coming to front of school committee. So the state always allows you to make amendments to different plans depending on the data that you present. So you're not locked into this exactly as it is today.
And the other reason why every district needed to provide a plan is because the SOA committee is going to look at consistency of the evidence-based practices and where they see trends across the state. So they potentially could say, okay, we see there's a high need for WEDA frameworks training. So we're going to provide a grant around that. So funding could come in that way, too. So this is kind of a nice deep dive into information for DESI to see the needs across the Commonwealth.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
If you could go through every line of the application.
I'll tell you what, there, so when I, I had, it's a funny little story. When I had my meeting, and of course, they didn't read the whole grant. And so I said, can I just show you, like, question one? And she looked at it, and she goes, well, if this is the whole grant, I can just call this exemplary and we'll call it a day. And I was like, oh. And she goes, I didn't need all that detail, but I wanted to.
But it's there.
But it's there.
Right. So I guess we just need a motion.
I'll move that we, is it accept, approve? Approve the SOA plan as presented for submission to the seat.
Discussion? Discussion? We're all talked out on that. You did a wonderful job. All in favor?
Aye.
Look at that.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, so you have some school choice numbers for us?
Yes, I do. Or do we, we can move on, correct? Because the board just stepped off for a minute. So, yeah. So we, we presented, we just wanted to follow up with our principals to, as you said, to open up the, the seats in different grade levels. And I believe in 2021, we had recommended seats, and then we had like an allotment, like if, you know, we got more than, than, than what we recommended, like an anticipated possible additions. So that's what I'd like to try to recommend now. Typically, we don't have, in my six years, I think we only had one time where we had to draw names out, or two times. So what we did is, for the principals, we had them take another look at their school choice and what they're really comfortable with, and then kind of what they could go up to. So I'm going to give you what they're comfortable with and with the possibility of additional slots, and then we can have it under discussion.
Do you have a handout of this?
Joanne, do we have a handout for the? You know? It's not, it's not a lot, but I can read them out to you.
I mean, I think, you know, if we're going to vote on something, it's good to have something in front of us to vote on. But, you know, if we need to vote on it tonight, that's fine. But I personally would have preferred to have it in advance.
Yes. Point well taken.
Have these numbers changed since last week?
I wrote them down at the last meeting.
But they also were not presented to us in a written form.
No, I know, but I want to, are they the same?
Some are, yes. With the potential addition.
I don't remember them, so you're going to say them.
All right. So for grade two, we're at five seats, recommended seats at five, with a possible addition of five. So that total would be 10. But we're really comfortable with the five. But if, as I said, if we had a few more that come in, we would be able to go up with those additionals.
So before you go on, though, can I just clarify what, what we would be voting on? Is, are we voting on a range or the top number?
Well, the, I mean, what we did in 2021 is, it worked out pretty well, is you had the recommended seats, and then we, possible additions, we added. But I guess it would just be a top number then, if that's.
I think typically we vote on the number.
The total number.
And then if you get a lot from one grade, you usually come back and say, hey, we can actually fit a few more here.
Yep, we'll definitely, that's what we'll do.
So should we, are you suggesting we go with the lower number?
I, I would say so, sure.
Just to be conservative with it.
Well, Superintendent, what would you?
Yeah, I would, I would just do the whole. I would do the whole. So I would.
So up to the maximum number.
Yeah, maximum number. So grade two, I would open up 10 slots for grade two. Grade three, in grade one, we're full. So there's no slots for grade one, no slots for grade three.
And none for kindergarten.
And at this time, we'll watch kindergarten. Remember, we had that discussion last time?
Yes, these should be presented at the end of the summer.
Yeah, usually May or June, I'll start giving you. So just to go back for that, we had the largest kindergarten, like, so if we opened up kindergarten seats last year at around this time, we had the largest kindergarten class. So that's why this kindergarten class moved into grade one, that's why there's no seats for grade one. So that's, those numbers we watched. Grade four, three seats. Grade five, three seats. Grade six, we have, total would be 15. Grade seven is 10. Grade eight is 10. Grade nine, typically, we do 20 seats for grade nine. And then grade 10, Mr. Wolf added 10 seats. And then grade 10, Mr. Wolf added 10 seats for grade 10. So to recap, grade two would be maximum of 10. Grade four is three, grade five is three. Grade six would be 15. Grade seven is 10, grade eight is 10, and grade nine, 20, and grade 10, 10. No slots for grade 11 or grade 12.
Superintendent, do you know when you generally find out if the charter kids or other kids are going to come in to the district for ninth grade, when do they normally let you know?
Uh, usually it starts coming around this time if they're coming back. Like, I would say the next couple of months, we'll know for the charter school students.
And there's usually some students from the IC as well, but I think they can use projections pretty well to figure out the class sizes. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So our policy and state law is that if a student moves out of, who is currently in the district and moves out of the district, no longer lives in Newburyport, but wishes to remain a student in the public schools, they have to then apply for school choice, and there's no exceptions to that process, correct?
Correct.
And that the students, there's, there's students who have siblings in the district are given priority. How is that priority given? Are they given sort of a greater weight? Or like, for example, if we had to do a lottery?
Yes, so those, the people that have siblings would be, they'd be in.
Okay.
Would probably only.
You'd probably take them first and then subtract the number.
So you'd kind of subtract them from the number.
So it would just be in the context of a lottery-type situation?
Yeah.
Where there was not enough spots.
And then in the past, I mean, in the past also, for extenuating circumstances, the superintendent would have a right to keep a family in district if there was. Correct.
But not across the board.
Not, no, no, not, exactly. So if a family moves out of Newburyport and they're in another district, they would have to apply for school choice. Yes.
Okay, thank you for answering that. And I think you said in the beginning that we rarely have lottery.
Yeah, I think it's come down to two grades, I think, and I think we had to draw it twice. Joanne and I over the past six years.
One year, two grades. It didn't really work out too well because it seemed like a lot of, I think it was grade 11, there was a lot of switching that year. And by the time we switched the lottery, then it just so happened that that particular person chose and backed out. So then we'd have to pull the next waiting list and we just kept pulling and pulling.
But it doesn't, it's not often that we have a lottery. We typically, we have a number of applicants are less than, a number of choice people are less than the number of spots.
Slots, correct.
Thank you.
I think my only question is around grade two. Is, if you took the five instead of the 10, or even the zero, is there, is there a negative impact to the district where you'd have to, like, lose a teacher because you need to fill?
No, so, yeah.
Just because of that grade level? You know, grade two, it's like, I guess I'm just wondering, the other ones seem a little bit more stable. But grade two, like, that's a large number in grade two. Would it benefit the students or the school to have, you know, slightly lower class sizes in, in grade three by not accepting that many?
Yeah, I think when, when we look at that, we look at the class sizes. So when you spread, let's, as we said, even if you had 10 students coming in over seven classes, you know, it's, it's a small number when you spread them. But typically, we probably won't, won't be at 10. So it's, when we look at the school choice, it's, I think, Mr. Little Hale, it's like if you have a, you know, if we purchase a bus, for example, and we're already paying for the bus and there's four or five seats open, that's kind of the same approach, that we already have all of our staffing patterns in place. Class sizes are in a good spot, but we could afford to open up, you know, those.
Are there any other stresses that you foresee? Just, just by virtue, because these numbers aren't here now, but we've seen them recently. It's, it's, it's twofold essentially in the last couple of years, meaning we're letting in potentially 81, and as soon as two years ago was 32 or something like that. I guess just to follow up, because people have been asking this question. Are there any other stresses other than class size, facilities, that you see potentially injecting this many kids into the system may or may not cause?
No, as I said, I think our staffing patterns, everything is all set. It's just, these are the opportunities to fill some seats.
Are we ready to make a motion on this? The policy is in the packet and it's JFBB. If anyone would like to make the motion and reference that policy.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
So per policy, JFBB, I motion that we approve Superintendent Gallagher's numbers for school choice for the 2024-25 school year.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, only that we, I request that the numbers be reported in a table format in the minutes.
Great, thank you for that. Anyone else?
Uh, not, not discussion, but I just want to clarify, we talked about this at the meeting last week, that kids coming in, they may need an IP, the district does not pay for that. Comes from the sending district, all the way through, if they're here for all 12 years.
Correct.
Because a lot of people ask that, and some of the city council wasn't able to come to that meeting, so, just so they all know.
Yes.
And I'm sure they're all watching from home now anyway.
Of course.
Sure. Yes, any, any services for school choice students are paid from the sending district.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the job descriptions for restructuring, which are in our packet along with those org charts. Thank you for the new org chart, by the way, the one for, specifically for special ed, that was helpful.
Oh, okay, great.
So that's you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it is. This has been, as we all know, we've been working, I would say, since August and listening to students and families' concerns around, you know, special education, along with working with our faculty and support staff, just really providing more support overall for the Department of People's Services, which also encompasses not only special education, but also our therapeutic programming. And as we all know, coming out of the pandemic, not only has our special education, families have been consistent over the years, but we're also seeing this growth of students that, and families that need more mental health support within the public schools. So part of this restructuring plan is to really address that, the needs of our students and families, some of our most vulnerable students and families, and house it under the Director of People's Services. And so we've talked about the plan, I presented it in February 27th. We, I think it's a comprehensive plan that addresses the needs of the district and the needs of a population that we really got to reallocate our resources towards and provide the most support. I will be following, I think there was a couple of emails, individual emails, from some families. But the team facilitators, I'll talk to about that today. So those are going to be, the whole restructuring plan, obviously, Ms. O'Connor with 42 years' experience. We have a legal team that we work with on the special education. So all of our restructuring plans meet all the state and federal guidelines. The facilitators are required by law to satisfy, you know, three different areas. They have to be qualified to provide and supervise a provision of special design programming and instruction that meets the need, the needs of children with disabilities. Also, they have to have a knowledge of general curriculum and a knowledge of the available resources for the public agency. So that's kind of like the law part of it. But our team facilitators will be experienced, licensed special educators or relative related service providers who have the authority to, you know, commit the resources, district resources, as they run the team meetings, make decisions based on law and regulations of IDA. This will allow our team facilitators to focus solely on the team process and compliance. And what we're really aspect of this is by freeing up the staff members to focus on the team process, it allows them to develop personal relationships with the students and families. So we are not going to have teachers trying to teach five classes and then run team meetings. We're totally separating this position to have these veteran teachers or service providers that want to take this opportunity in a leadership role to step in and run effective team meetings. And as we talked about on the 27th, this would allow the administrators to really focus on the programming, both the therapeutic programming and then also our special education programming, and then also be a liaison, you know, for some challenges that might be happening. So we see this plan as, as I said, it's really taking our resources district-wide, shifting them to our most needy, I would say, department. And I think the plan looks pretty good. We vetted it, you know, with the staff, our teachers, legal counsel. And I think it answers, I think, a lot of the concerns that we've been hearing all through the fall. It addresses a lot of the needs of the, of the district. So that's pretty much where we're at.
I did have a couple of comments, but before I go into the comments, could you just clarify for me? Because I'm forgetting the, the job title. Who is the position that's having a reduced teaching load?
That's going to be the team facilitators, correct. So there'll be no teaching associated with that.
So there'll be what?
There's no teaching.
No, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So they're just there to run the team meetings, making sure the IPs and everything's in compliance. And then also what's really important, as I said, is the relationship building with students and families.
Right. Okay, so I just wanted to make a couple of comments addressing some of the concerns that we have heard from parents in email and also our public comment. And also just thank all of those parents for emailing and coming out tonight. You know, it's so beneficial for us to hear your concerns and your questions, you know, regardless of, of this vote. And I'll be just upfront that I'm as supportive of these job descriptions and this restructuring. I'll be, you know, voting to approve this, but also to hear people's comments and questions. That just allows us to get more answers from the district and respond effectively so that you feel good about what the district is doing with your children. So just a couple of things I wanted to address was, one, that the bifurcation of the social, emotional, and the academic departments doesn't mean necessary, or it doesn't, it doesn't mean that your child who needs both things, that two different people are going to kind of be handling both of those things, right? And that those people are talking to each other. That you have, you know, the district administrators that are going to oversee those programs and make sure that programming is running well and is well resourced and the, you know, are effective and efficient programs. But then the actual people delivering services to your children are not necessarily changing. You know, and those people are still talking to each other, and they know this particular child and what they need. But if they need, you know, this program for, for one challenge and they need this program for another, we know that both those programs are being overseen and run by people who are, you know, experienced in, in that area. And then the second concern was just that teachers are going to be running the meetings and do they have the experience, the time, the capacity, the workload to be able to handle this? Do they have experience with management? Do they have experience with all of this? And so the other thing that I wanted to address is, one, I think it was really helpful that the superintendent reached out to the Teachers Association, and we heard from them tonight that they're really happy about this plan and they're in full support of it. And so if we're concerned about the teachers workload and how they feel about it, we can sort of alleviate that concern that we have heard from teachers and this is a plan that they overall do support. And then, secondly, I think, and I, you know, I was in this position as, you know, a newer teacher and even coming out of the teaching profession, that teacher, teachers have incredible skills. And they have incredible skills and knowledge that is not always, and I'm sure people have the best intentions, but that's not always recognized by people in other, you know, more traditional management roles. And so it can be really difficult coming out of that position and interview when people say, oh, what kind of management skills do you have? And how do you project manage this? And do you have that experience? And it's hard to say, well, oh, I'm only going to teacher. But it's not only, right? Only is, is not something that should be qualified in that statement. They have really amazing skills. And so a lot of teachers do leave the teaching profession or even leave the district because they're looking for leadership and management opportunities that are not always there. It's very difficult to kind of like move up through this career path. There are lots of people, of course, who don't want to and will be a teacher for 30 years in their entire career and be happy. For those who want to gain greater experience, to have a district that offers that opportunity to not necessarily be a principal or an administrator, but you have a chance to be a teacher leader, or in this case, a team facilitator, you still have experience and knowledge and capacity and a lot of education behind you to prepare you for that role. And then I would also expect that our new director, Brad Books, will be coaching and supporting these people, right? If this is a new role for them, just like any director needs to support someone in a new role, that they will be supported in, in taking on those new responsibilities. But I feel confident that, you know, we have teacher leaders in our district that have a lot of knowledge and experience and a desire for, you know, a more leadership role. And so I'm excited that we have a structure that can offer them that chance. Thank you.
I just, a follow-up on that. I think I know the answer here, but just to clarify, it came up in at least one of the emails that we got today. If we are elevating special ed teachers into these facilitator roles, we're not then having fewer teachers, right? This isn't just a shifting responsibility, this is a new, these are new positions, correct? Because there was some concern, you didn't, I don't know if you saw that email, but the concern, are we going to have fewer?
I want to hear the answer to that, because that's not clear from this org chart.
Right, so within, within our, we anticipate, once we move forward, that within our, I guess, our ranks, that people will be filling in within the district. So we're not hiring a bunch of new positions to fill these.
But they're, to, to your point, that's not what you asked, right?
Right, if we're, well, if we're shifting existing teachers into these positions, then are we hiring replacements for those teachers?
So right now, we have two teachers because of some of the needs that we had with the team chair leaving. We have some teachers that are already filling these type of positions. So that's, that's what we're looking to do. So we're not going to, our teaching, our teaching pattern in, let me say, the, within the programs, we're still going to maintain a full teaching force and not be adding.
Right, so we won't have any reduced capacity in teachers?
Correct, it's reallocating in staffing patterns that will shift within the organization. We anticipate.
I mean, so my question was that, the way this is presented, first of all, it says teacher leaders with reduced teaching responsibilities. It sounds like what you're describing is actually no teaching responsibilities.
Correct.
The other question I have related to that is, is this a new position, team facilitation?
It's a, right now, we have team, we had TFL, so team facilitating leaders. So those were three administrators overseeing everything.
Okay, so the job description you did not include in here, so I'm, the way it's presented in our packet is that it's a new, new position?
It stays within the teaching, the NTA, that stays within the teaching ranks.
Yeah, but the job description, is it team facilitator? Do we have an existing job description for a team facilitator leader?
We do.
Okay, so in the packet, that was unclear, because it made, it's presented as if it's a new position. Personally, I think I'd like to see the description for the team facilitator leader at some point. I am concerned, and I know, I appreciate that the MTA was here to, to make a comment. I am concerned, and I know, I appreciate that the MTA was here to, to make a comment, but I am concerned that the way this is being communicated seems to be that we're taking, we're taking teachers out of the classroom and putting them in a leadership role. I do not disagree with Member Higgins' statement about allowing for advancement, but I am concerned about reducing the capacity for us to provide teachers in the classroom. And so I, I think that just needs to be made very clear, that if I'm voting on this, we're not taking teachers out of a needed role in the classroom, because I am concerned about that. And I also would like, you know, as a follow-on to that, how has the incoming director been, been engaged in this discussion?
He's been engaged throughout, yeah.
Okay.
Thinks it's, it's a, a good plan. So we've met with him a few times already.
Okay. That's good to hear. So can you just clarify?
Yeah, we're, we're not going to be reducing services in the classroom to, to maintain the restructuring. So all of the classroom services that we have currently are going to continue to exist.
But, I mean, so like anything though, because I know special ed jobs are tough to fill, we could fill all these facilitator positions and possibly be three positions short in the, in the fall. In theory, might not.
Right.
But those are going to be open positions that we hope that we're going to bring three new people into the district to do.
I mean, I think the first piece is to move forward on the restructuring and then once that happens, then we'll have an opportunity to, within the organization, there'll be some movement. But none, none of the classroom services or any of that will be missed.
Okay. And I just, I'm bringing this up now because we don't have any ads in our budget for, for this. So if, if.
That's a great point.
If we need that, I want us to talk about that now. Now's the budget. I don't want to just be over, bending over backwards to try to fit what we need within our existing budget when we actually know that we need funding for it or would like to have funding. Maybe it doesn't get approved, but either way, I just, this is when we should talk about it. Do we need more money for this part of, to, to make this work and to really fund this, to really make sure this is restructured?
No. If you recall, part of the restructuring is some central office and district positions that can be consolidated. So we anticipate, right now, we have a placeholder of around $100,000, but we anticipate, depending on how things move forward, we anticipate even more savings there. So if there is more support within our operational budget, we should be very well-suited if we needed, you know, more support with staffing. But at this point, I don't think we need any staffing or additional staffing that we would have to come to school committee for.
So at this point, you're projecting $100,000 in savings?
Right now, minimum.
Just collectively?
Collectively.
Okay.
Possibly more.
Can I ask, sorry, if others want to ask, I can take a break.
Someone else have a question?
No, I just wanted to follow up on the, on the previous comments, which, and this is delicate sometimes, because the, the community engagement and involvement is very important and very well appreciated. So it was wonderful to see Mr. Gamm, Jemmy here and talk about the communication with, with the teachers and that you've, I guess, I guess my point is, there's been more solicitation of feedback than perhaps appears, just by virtue of this being released, I guess, as early as last week to the general public, that there's been a lot of communication behind the scenes in smaller finance subcommittee meetings that's come up. So I, I just want to reiterate that there's been a lot of fleshing through, that's gone, gone through that. And, and we're excited about the estimated savings, to say the least. But I, I know that even Dr. Higgins on vacation was getting sort of communication on the sort of, you know, we've been holding the superintendent's feet to the fire on this reorg for some time. And not all the questions have been answered, but he's, he's going out of his way to answer all those questions and maybe even like a FAQ ultimately on that could be helpful, because I know right now it's kind of ad hoc. But I, I just wanted to, to say that, that there's been a lot of on and offline discussions on this particular, because it's a significant reorganization. These don't happen often.
Right. And just, you know, as a follow-up, it's, you know, part of the consolidation of those positions will provide additional funding to support. So that's why when we're saying, you know, am I going to come back? And so we believe within our operational budget, with the shifts of the staff, giving them potential to move into different positions, it's still going to be a cost savings and we're not, you know, after April 1st, after the public hearing, say, oh, you know, we need three additional teachers now. So it's, we've really vetted this throughout. And I think anytime you're doing a restructuring, you, you anticipate, you know, different, I guess, possibilities. So through all of our calculations and all of that, this is definitely going to be a cost savings by reallocating resources over to our most, as I said, most needy families and students. We're really, I think, excited about the opportunity. And, and you can see the structure, how it's built in within district. Eventually, when I'm not here, you'll have leadership capacity that hopefully will maintain all these really important roles, so.
I'll just say too, I mean, I think, I think you're trying to address a need here too. I mean, I think cost savings are great, right? And that's not so much striving. That's what's driving this, is that we saw an opportunity in our special ed program to, to do a reorg, especially bringing a new director in.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, that, that was the driving force from listening to the, the families as we were going through that process. And also listening to the school committee and, and community members, you know, how do you address, you know, the needs? And going back to the mayor's point, it's really taking a look at district-wide, you know, where are our resources going? What's the need of the current times? And just, you know, reallocating resources and, and, you know, shifting the need. But that, that was a driving factor, is to provide more support for our students and families. And then from there, you know, how can you do it so it's, it's manageable and, and cost, you know, saving? So it's, you know, I, I think we're in a good spot to move forward, to be honest.
Yeah, just one exciting aspect or prospect here is that with Mr. Brooks coming in, who was on campus, so to speak, last week, and it's not like he's being sidelined, that's come up a couple of times. It's not like he's unaware that this is happening. He's plugging into like a whole new system. But there's a real opportunity here to improve communication vertically up and down, meaning so that he can come in and, and hold people accountable at lower levels and also there's an opportunity for parents and, and, I almost said lower level providers. I don't mean that. I was just being on the, vertically on the, in the system, so that they can communicate what the needs are up the chain to facilitators and then have some, some professional supervisors that can really oversee that. I, I mean, just in terms of pure org restructure, there's some real opportunity here to synthesize things so that communication, which is, keeps coming up as, as a real point of emphasis, can be highly enhanced. And if this goes well, that, that could be a real opportunity for improvement.
Correct.
So I completely support that comment and I support the general direction. I just want to make sure that we're not overlooking the needs in the classroom at the, to the mayor's point, because we're concerned about budget. Like, I just want to make sure that we're being, and I, and Superintendent, you've reassured me that you've thought this through, but I just want to say that if we need more resources in the classroom in addition to the restructuring, like now's the time for that to be identified and talked about. And you've reassured me that you've thought that through and that's not necessary, but I, that's why I'm bringing it up, because I, I completely understand that we, we need to have good leadership. We also need to have the resources in the classroom and that's really, really essential.
And we've got a special FinCom meeting this week that we weren't supposed to have that's only about budget, so we can make sure that comes up.
Okay.
And write that down.
I'm, I'm also prepared to support this plan.
Okay.
But just want to, I've said this to you before, but I, I want to make sure that with the elimination of Ms. Abledo's position, that we don't create holes. I just think of her tremendous contributions over her three-year tenure, particularly with early literacy, the development of the L program, which is, you know, we just got this, you know, wonderful news of no findings from Desi, as well as the Title I program. So with the newly created position, are, are we going to have the expertise and the coverage that we need so that we don't lose the, lose the momentum, lose the momentum and all the work that's been done in those three areas?
Yeah, I, I think 100%, and that's where restructuring, that role is Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, which is just really a focus, the other piece with this restructuring, it allows that position to focus on all of those things you just mentioned.
So those will still be addressed?
Correct. Under the, and the academic teams. But for example, foster care and homeless that was under that department will get shifted out.
Student services.
Licenseur will get shifted out. So there's a lot of pieces of that that we're pulling out of that role. So the Assistant Superintendent role for Teaching and Learning can just directly focus on exactly what was presented tonight. So that's the other benefit, I think, of the restructuring.
Can I just make a quick comment on the job descriptions? I'm just kind of going through all of them and, and Director of Human Resources is the only one that doesn't have a master's degree required? Is there a reasoning behind that or is it just a graduate certificate? Because the financial, financial analyst position that would be reporting to that person has master's degree preferred, but bachelor's degree required. I'm just, just curious.
Yeah, I think it's the, I think when we created that job description a couple of years ago, we were looking for bachelors or, you know, more. I don't think that was a new job description. It was kind of what we did a couple of years ago.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I do have a question just about process going forward. So you brought that up about the new, the, there's also positions being not filled as a result of this. So what is your process going to be going forward in terms of advertising and hiring?
Yeah, so I think what we'll do is we'll post, you know, within probably the next week or so. And then from there, we have, we'll set up, you know, our committees. So we'll have representatives of teachers, administrators. We'll go through a process. And then because I think we have some great internal candidates, that we also might have someone, right now, we have Pam Gould, who's actually working for the district. So she's a retired superintendent of human resources. So we may have her kind of oversee the process to keep it very neutral and open. So once, once we have, once we're able to move forward, then I can regroup and then I can inform the school committee of what the next steps would be and what that's going to look like.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay. If, if we're ready for a motion, my thinking is that we would do this as, a single motion to approve this, like the package of job descriptions for the restructuring and the policy is GCA, if someone would like to go for it.
I am having to make a motion to approve the proposed restructuring plan that includes the new and modified professional staff positions consistent with policy GCA.
Second? Discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, there you go. Okay. So next, we have the appointment of the Whittier representative, representative, Newburyport representative to the Whittier School Committee. And I want to start by thanking Ms. Walker for researching the, the process so that we're following Robert's Rules for Elections. Our first step will be simply nominating, which is not a motion, does not require a second. So we have the four, we've heard from the four members, community members at our last meeting, who've expressed interest in serving as the Whittier School Committee Representative. I'd now like to invite nominations for the Whittier School Committee Representative.
Who's going in specific order?
Nope, we're not voting. We're just, we're just nominating.
You're just nominating.
I nominate Owen Smith.
Okay, thank you.
Your name is?
Oh, my name's Brian Callahan.
That's fine. I'm just making notes.
I nominate Mary Delai.
And I nominate Donna Holiday.
If there are no further nominations, I'll close nominations and we'll move on to discussion. Are we good? Okay. So step two is discussion. And I'm going to start just going in the order that people were nominated. So I'll start with you, Mr. Callahan, to tell us about why you nominated Owen Smith. And then anyone who wants to speak about Owen will have an opportunity.
First, I want to thank everybody who applied. Obviously, the resumes were pretty impressive. And the thing about the Whittier thing, you know, it's coming up at a, at a weird time because of the vote for the new, the new building project and everything that went on with that. And, you know, going back and forth about candidates and using my wife as my sounding board, anybody who has a wife or is a wife probably realizes you're right most of the time. What struck me about the entire thing, and I don't, I don't really mean to use this term, but I, I still see, I feel that Whittier is still this old boys' club. And it's just this coziness during the, the building project between the administration and the builder, the fact that Left Field ran the dissolving of the school building committee instead of the superintendent. I just, I, I don't like any of that stuff. I think this is not just about the building project, a new one or repairs, but it's about fixing the whole Whittier relationship with the communities that it serves, including the agreement, which I know is a task force right now, ramping up to change that in one or more ways. So what I, one of the things I was talking about was connections. And it struck me one day that I, I don't want people with connections. I want an outsider to go in there and not be afraid to shake things up and really communicate with the city of Newburyport and report out to us and be our representatives for that community and not the other way around. And that's why I chose them.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to Owen Smith?
I'll just say, I mean, I really liked Owen's interview, you know, to me as well. I really think this next person has to reflect the massive vote that just took place on January 23rd. I think we heard loud and clear from our, our people here in Newburyport. And I just, I know Owen was very outspoken, really helped get information out, correct information out, because there was a lot of incorrect information that was getting passed around. So I did appreciate that. I mean, not everyone took a stand and I thought, I thought he did that. I will just say about Owen, you know, I, I first got to know Owen when he was on the Water Stewer Commission, and he was tough. He was very tough to the administration as a member on there. But what I think was really tough about him there is exactly what I kind of would like to see in, in maybe the next rep there, someone who's going to really dig into their budget, who's going to really be fair in evaluating the superintendent and then being really conscious about, you know, the relationship that Whittier has with each of the communities, in our case, particularly Newburyport. So those are kind of the things I'm thinking of as far as that goes.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to Owen as a candidate? All right, then, if everyone's good, I'll move on to Ms. Higgins. You nominated Mary Delai.
Yes, and again, thank you to all the candidates who came out. Really appreciate your time and expertise here. I wasn't able to be at the meeting, but I did watch the, the video and I was really impressed by Mary's interview. She was extremely well-prepared. She has an extensive background and resume in education and schools and particularly, you know, the, the business, finance, and operations. and schools, and particularly, you know, the business finance and operations side, which is so important to the Whittier community and coming back to us. And so I know that the, this building vote is top of mind for a lot of people right now, and I would say that she has certainly demonstrated the experience to determine what the next steps are in terms of a renovation or starting over with a new build. She's been part of those types of conversations before or in other school districts, has dealt with major capital projects, and so I think she has expertise to do that. But aside from the building project, you know, I know, again, like I said, I know that's top of mind, but the Whittier School Committee deals with a plethora of issues that are not the school building project, you know, in either a new building or the renovations, right? It's a, it's a full, large vocational high school that has a lot of other assets and challenges and, you know, amazing students that go there. And so I just felt that Mary was a very well-rounded candidate with a lot of expertise in a plethora of areas in the education sphere that she could contribute to that school committee. So that's why I was impressed with her and nominate her candidacy.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak about Mary Delai? Mr. Boker?
Yeah, I'll just, well, first of all, I think all four candidates are exceptionally well-qualified, and I think we're just very lucky that people are willing to serve in this capacity. It's above and beyond for people to stick their neck out like that and be willing to contribute the time, especially when things are controversial, to stay the least. And I honestly believe that all four of these folks would be excellent in the role, and I mean that quite genuinely. I was really impressed with, and I'll just share my biases, which are, you know, as a former educator, you kind of recognize professional bona fides when you see them. So when you see it, sometimes you need a professional, and I think this might be an instance where a professional administrator could be really, really beneficial. I think Mary is an eminently professional administrator. I also believe quite strongly that anytime we have an opportunity to do anything, if there's a lynchpin issue that I fall back on it, it's generally green energy. If there's an opportunity here to build a facility or to update a facility with any effort towards carbon neutrality, that's a huge issue that we don't discuss enough in our educational system. And I was thrilled to hear about the environmental pathway earlier today, that's just, especially the fact that it's so well-funded. And I know that she brings a lot of expertise in that, in that realm. Thanks.
Mary, go ahead.
So I thought Mary's interview was really awesome, too. Full disclosure, I worked with Mary years ago at Wilmington Public Schools, so I got to see her as a leader firsthand. And it's great, now she's in Newburyport and she's always looking at it, involved. She was on the EAC for a short time as well, and so that piece about bringing, you know, green buildings and sustainability, you know, she's got a wonderful background as well. So again, I think she would be awesome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we will move on. Michelle, you're going to speak about Donna Holliday.
Thanks. Yes, I thought everyone, you know, did an amazing job at the interviews and I'm really appreciative of people standing up. I think my real sense about having Donna Holliday is that, you know, she was, you know, worked very successfully here as the mayor, she was also on the school committee, so she does have an understanding and appreciation for the overall view of what takes place in a school. And I also feel that her, you know, being involved in the building projects that we did here, and to echo some of the things that the public speaker, Vista Cunningham, said, you know, really walked us through some really big projects here. And, you know, her, you know, work with the mass building, school building, I think it's really been, is pretty critical going forward, so, yeah.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak of Donna Holliday? Okay, would anyone else like to speak at all about any of the candidates before we move on to the vote? Any final comments?
Just generally, I think we have three very distinct candidates that all have very, that all have incredible qualifications for one reason or another, but they're very different. And I am thinking very carefully about collaboration. I do think that while it is important to have somebody with experience and maybe an outside perspective, I also think it's important for the Whittier group to be able to work collaboratively together. And I think, you know, that's something I'm just being cognizant of. If we, if we were in a similar situation, we'd want to be able to work collaboratively with this person. And we'd also want to feel that our community is represented by somebody who has had a history of representing our community. So that's what I'm thinking about as I decide about my vote.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are we ready to vote then? Ms. Yel, did you get my order? Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we'll move on to the vote then. Yep.
Andrew Boger?
Mary Delai.
Brian Callahan?
Owen Smith.
Breonna Higgins?
Mary Delai.
Kathleen Shaw?
Donna Holliday.
Donna Holliday.
Vice Chair Sarah Hall?
Donna Holliday.
Chair Mayor Sean Riordan?
Owen Smith.
So we don't have a majority?
Yep, that's fine, we vote again.
Yep.
Can you, can you just read off the totals for each person?
Mary Delai has two votes. Owen Smith has two votes. And Donna Holliday has three votes.
Thank you.
Six, seven.
Okay, so, so no one is off the table, right? We said we would only be doing that if there were zero votes for anyone.
Correct, yep.
So we will vote again. Do we, do we want to have any discussion before we vote again? I'm looking to you because you're the policy expert, the procedural expert here. I'm going to open it up if anyone would like to say anything before we vote again.
Well, I would just say Vice Chair Hall, you did not make any comments. Do you have any comments to add?
I was not 100% decided coming into this vote, so I really appreciated what everyone had to say. Donna Holliday was my top choice, in part because of all the feedback I got, I feel that she is recommended by, like, the widest net of stakeholders. I really appreciated hearing from members of the Whittier School Committee as well as Whittier staff. Thank you to Mr. Cunningham for coming in tonight. So not just the Newburyport voters, but the people in the Whittier community, to your point, that it needs to be somebody who is going to care about the Whittier community and moving them forward, not just the building project, but all aspects of the Whittier school. So for that reason, she was my top choice. Also, I really respected her ability to jump in in the fall, that was not easy. She essentially boarded a moving train and, a runaway train, and tried to apply the brakes herself, which simply wasn't possible. And I know that there were people on the Whittier School Committee who were skeptical of her at the time, who are now saying that they wish they had listened to her and really value having her on board. So that's my take there.
Thank you. That said, I am, I am open to other candidates. To your point, Mr. Boker, we have, we are fortunate in that we have a strong, a strong set of candidates here. Would anyone else like to speak?
I'll make one more comment. Again, I just want to echo what everyone else said, that we definitely have excellent candidates in all the choices. Two things really resonated with me from my colleagues' comments. One is Brian saying that, I'm sorry, Member Callahan saying that an outside voice and an outside perspective would be helpful. And then that Member Walker mentioned collaboration, which is really on my mind as well, as someone who can be really collaborative. And at, at this time, this is why I think both of those points actually make me feel more strongly about Mary Delai. One is that she is an outsider into this process, she has a lot of experience, but not in Whittier necessarily, so she might bring an outside perspective. And then, secondly, collaborative, well, I can't, you know, necessarily speak to her professionally and personally as collaborative, though she's, you know, experienced administrator, I would imagine that she is. I would think that, well, I cannot say enough how much I really appreciate the time and dedication that Owen Smith took to that campaign. He might not then fit the qualifications of an outside perspective because he was on a very, you know, strong camp, that, that might make it difficult for him to sort of become a collaborative force within that committee. So not that it's impossible, and I also really appreciate the dedication that he had to our community and that process as a whole, but it just might make collaboration a little bit difficult, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? We will vote again.
Mary Delai.
Brian Callahan?
Owen Smith.
Breonna Higgins?
Mary Delai.
Kathleen Shaw?
Donna Holliday.
Juliet Walker?
Mary Delai.
Vice Chair Sarah Hall?
Mary Delai.
Chair Mayor Sean Riordan?
Mary Delai.
Okay, I believe we have just appointed Mary Delai to the Whittier School Committee. So I guess we'll be in touch with her, yes?
Yes.
Details. Okay, so should we just move on to our subcommittee updates now? We don't need to?
There's more?
I know, I feel like there's very little to report.
I would say, good job, that was tough, and, you know, we, I think as a school committee, it's important that we have a procedure in advance next time. So maybe before we have to do that again, we take a vote?
Put that into policy.
Put that, or at least take a vote on how we're going to run the meeting so we all know how. I mean, it was great that you were able to email that out, but nice job, well done.
I've done that three times and it's never actually fallen that. It was just, who do you like?
Right, right.
I thought that was very good.
Very loosey-goosey.
And we as a committee can do, I mean, when we have those kind of situations, we can vote how we're going, you know, we can discuss that and decide in advance. We don't have to default to something, we can discuss as a group.
FinCom, we did have that meeting, if you want to just recap or?
Yep, we had a special meeting, I don't want to use that term, I guess, we had a...
Well, it was a joint meeting?
Right, it wasn't said as a special one, I was going to say. Joint meeting with the city councillor, city councils, budget and finance people, as well as Councilor McCauley and Councilor Wright. That's it, for city council, it was there, right? Superintendent gave his general budget overview, although he stressed that even from that day, the numbers would change by the time we all hear about it again. And it was pretty productive. I'd just like to give the city council a heads up before we kind of jump into May and go for approval. That was it. And our next meeting is Thursday at 9:30 in Mr. Little Hale's office. Right, you good there?
I am now.
You know about that, right?
Yes, yes, I do.
The Councilor Zied and Councilor Con as well.
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, any policy subcommittee updates?
Yep, we have started reviewing policies that were on hold. We don't have, we won't have anything immediately tacked on, but we do, we have approved, I think I said this last time, we have approved K and L for recommended to the full school committee, and I believe I'll work with Vice Chair Hall to get that on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, piggybacking off that, I have a couple of things that I'm going to bring to FinCom, a couple of policies that are budget-related.
Member Callahan has homework from our policy committee.
I do, yes. But they won't be in, they won't be this week's meeting.
Not for this Thursday, just our monthly meeting next month. Okay. Great, yes, and we can be in touch, I think we'll be good with that for April 1st meeting.
Anything I missed? Member Higgins, anything I missed?
Okay. Was there any update from, on fundraising advisory? Mr. Callahan?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
Ms. Walker and I still have to get together and talk about the presentation.
Sometime in, maybe in April, there'll be a little presentation on that, okay. And Ms. Walker, was there, has there been a SISL meeting?
There has been a SISL meeting. I've got my notes. We, actually, we focused on the SOA. A little bit, aspects of the SOA. That was it.
That's not grant, right?
Not a grant.
Oh, we can even make jokes. Nice. All right, so it, superintendent's report, I think you had a couple things.
Yeah, just two things. The first, the transportation bids, we received two proposals. And I believe Mr. Little Hale is going to share that with FinCom on Thursday, so we just got those and we'll provide an update at the FinCom meeting. And then hopefully for the April 1st meeting, have an announcement of, you know, what company we're going to be going, going with. So.
We actually have a choice, isn't that a surprise?
It kind of is a surprise, yes.
All right.
Yeah, so we do have a choice and more details at FinCom first than then. And then the other piece, too, is as we were saying, revise of the budget. So I just, these are my talking points that I just printed out so you can follow along as you see those. So we came in, if you go to the bottom right there, the city appropriation on 3/4 was 7.05%, and then tonight, we're at a city appropriation of a 5.8%. And then the school department overall budget on the 4th was 4.57, and we're at 3.69. And then at the public hearing, we'll present all of that information, we're probably going to continue to work on different areas that we're looking at. So on the right-hand side, retirements, since our last meeting, we have another retirement. We're looking at our circuit breaker reimbursement, where we might be able to shift some of the special ed cost over there. Obviously, the transportation bid will be an important factor. District-wide staffing patterns that we talked about, and then the reorganization, the potential of more saving. And then the last piece, we have a couple of those competitive grants, you know, in the works. And as Ms. Ipilido reported, really excited about the pathways grant. So not only does that open up our pathways, but also puts us in the docket to write a capital improvement grant, which would also, the integrated ad space that we're talking about. So a lot of things are falling into place, and I'm really excited about that. Just some of the costs, the reorganization, as I said, it's a conservative estimate of $100,000, similar to what we talked about at the high school and the middle school because of student cohort populations, those are changing, so we'll be able to reallocate staff because there's less students with those needs. So we anticipate savings there. The NARC Leadership Revised Plan, which Mr. Macos presented, so really, for some of his teacher leaders that have already been doing a lot of the constructive dialogue, instead of bringing a company in for $13,000, that team would like to, you know, take a look at that. The Presley and Bus Monitor, so we have a revised plan tying back into the senior internship program, and then tying, we'll present that, but really utilizing some of the student leaders at the high school. And then, you know, another pathways grant was the early childhood. I mean, if you, as we were saying, planning down the road, the daycare, the pre- the daycare, the preschool, that type of stuff would fit in. The Peterson School Revised Plan, so just shifting the S, that $50,000 rolled into that tuition line item. So that's for the foreign exchange students, and then also the tuition in student. So we can shift that funding to that revolving account, which frees up our operational budget. And then the President and Materials, just rolling that $10,000 into their operational budget. So those are some of the savings and revisions, and really taking a harder look just from that, which really continues, as I said, not losing much, but just reallocating. So that's where we're at. I'm anticipating some more savings, and we'll do the public hearing. You'll have the full budget, the budget book, and getting, we anticipate our operational budget going down even a little bit more for the public hearing. And then we'll have public input, and then also school committee input. Then, once again, we'll revise over the next few weeks with the final vote on April 23rd. And that's kind of where we're at. So these are, these are my talking points, memory aids. Because I think if I just talked like you, it's at least you can kind of follow along.
I like things in writing.
Yes, I know that now. Yes. So those are my two updates that I have.
Thanks. I just wasn't following closely enough. I apologize if I missed it. But what shifted in terms of the bus monitors and the Peterson Plan?
So the, right now, what the bus monitor is talking with Mr. Wolf and Jamie Sokolowski. So the idea of the bus monitors is to utilize, almost like a senior internship program, so for our high-level leaders in the senior class, to utilize them on a daily basis. So we're looking at maybe having two students take a bus. Actually, we're looking at four. We have, because we want to rotate them, like, so there'll be four students with that one bus. So a student in the front, a student in the back, a leader that's involved, you know, might want to be in education, working with students. And then the whole idea of that is that's even for us, as we start looking at that, and Mr. Wolf's looking at that for providing that first block, so those students could go and ride the bus. But it's not really only that, it would be to incorporate different activities. So we would see these students as almost like the leaders. It could be, you know, for good behavior, competition, pizza parties, things like that. So for us, that would be probably cost-neutral. You know, I might pay minimum wage, whatever that is, for those students, but so they can buy.
Instead of paying IASO.
Correct. Instead of having the staff members and things like that. So this is just a different way of, and you'll have more supervision because you'll have two students on each bus. So that's the plan right now, and as we continue to revise that plan, Mr. Wolf will work on the backend and making sure those students have the time in the morning and the afternoon, so.
The only thing I would recommend is training them to deal with second graders, so you don't scare them out of education.
Oh, yes, yeah. Well, I'll tell you, the, you know what's a great, and I'm going to mention this, and I'll, because I'm getting old, I'll forget this, but what we did, and Mr. Boger, you'll love this, what we did last year is we had the seniors that were graduating. We did parades around the school. And I'll tell you, so, number one, the teachers that taught the seniors like, you know, 15 years ago, but our elementary, our elementary teachers are out there, that day when the seniors parade with their caps and gowns, our younger people look up to them like they're heroes. So that was the other pieces. So we foresee this, these students being on that bus is like just part of the whole school culture, so. But yes, there will be training by safety and things like that, yes. All right. And then the other piece is, so the Peterson School, so that's going to continue. We have that in the budget. But what we're going to do is we're going to shift, as we said, right now, we had the city allocation up here, and we're looking to use our resources to bring the city allocation down. So this is really an important piece of our budget, so we don't want to lose that. So we're going to shift the funding source over to that tuition line item. So we have the, for example, it's a revolving account for education, so our foreign exchange students. And then the other piece is that, that tuition in student, too. So we have a line item called tuition that we can forward, shift those funds there. So which reduces the overall budget.
Thank you for clarifying.
Just thinking outside the box.
Are you all set?
Yes, the mail, I think, likes those budget numbers at this point.
Okay. So you're all set?
I am all set. Those are my two, two agenda items.
Any new business?
I don't have any, nothing new. I don't think so. I don't remember last time. So the Whittier Task Force did meet. I think we were meeting right, I think it was right before, we were meeting before. We had a great first meeting. Every community was represented except for Merrimack, but they will be at the next meeting. Our next meeting is April 3rd. We're going to have it over in Amesbury. Yeah, it was good. What we did, we had our lawyer put together a memo about some of the things that we'd like to see changed in the, in the regional agreement from 1967. So I think all the, all the communities are using that as kind of a starting point as they go through and pick out things or add to what we already did. So I imagine we'll have a much more robust conversation. But it was a great first meeting.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, before, before we get a motion to adjourn, I just need one of you to stay because we're short of signature here. I'm going to do them, and then if one of you can stay to do a few more signatures.
I'll let you do that.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
I agree.
All right.